First of all, I'd like to say Mr. Underwood has notified the Board of Supervisors that he is unable to attend because of a family member's medical condition that requires him to provide care for such family member preventing his attendance. Mr. Underwood has requested to participate remotely pursuant to the Board's policy for electronic participation adopted 7th September 2021. If I could take a motion to allow Mr. Underwood into the meeting?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second to allow Mr. Underwood into the meeting electronically. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And motion carries. Okay, before we go ahead and get started tonight, just want to, we were delayed a little bit. We've had some internet outages, so that's one of the reasons why we are a little bit behind schedule. At this time, before we get started, I just want to introduce the Board members that are present. To my far right, we have Mr. Clay Forehand from the Madison District. To my immediate right, we have Mr. Jeff Seeley from the Bowling Green District. To my immediate left, we have Ms. Nancy Long from the Fort Royal District. And to my far left, we have Mr. Floyd Thomas from the Mattapani District. And joining us electronically is Mr. Underwood, Reggie Underwood, from the Reedy Church District. If I could have an invocation now for Ms. Long, would everyone please stand?
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the beauty of this day. We thank you for all your many wonderful blessings. We ask that you guide this board tonight and help us to reach decisions that would be for the best well-being of the county. We ask that you guide everyone on their journey home and keep us safe and bring us all back together again. In your name, amen.
Would please remain standing for the Pledge Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Thank you to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll go down to opening Board comments. Mr. Forehand?
I'm done, sir.
Mr. Seeley?
Yes, I have a few, thank you. First of all, let me say I had the privilege of attending the first Innovative Challenge, which was a robotics challenge at the University of Mary Washington Campus in Dalgreen. They had a number of really spectacular speakers. The NAVC Admiral, three-star Admiral came down and the new captain came to speak to all the students and the folks that were there to actually judge and look at what was, and watch what was going on. It was really a very interesting show. Fifteen schools were there, and I'm hoping that this grows over the years, but it's a great opportunity for students to interact with a number of folks. Dalgreen had a number of folks that actually mentored each one of those teams if they needed it. Second, I'd like to talk about the gateway to history. If those of you have heard on the radio that Westmoreland, King George, and Carolina are participating in a week-long, a couple-week-long, actually, history tour. Fort Royal is actually hosting it for three days, well, four days, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, to have all of their facilities and museums open. And plus, there's going to be on Saturday craftsmen there to actually show very legendary old-time skills. And lastly, Memorial Day is returning on the courthouse lawn at 11 o'clock on Memorial Day, 30 May. There is a group working on this to happen. We've got some great speakers, and Mr. Underwood will actually be opening up the ceremony that day, so I'm hoping everybody can attend. Thank you, Mr. Black.
Thank you, Mr. Seeley. Mr. Underwood?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Black. I do have a number of comments. First, let me say to the citizens who called me regarding the last couple of meetings that we've had and some of the issues that we've discussed, I want to say thank you to them for their phone calls. I do have a couple other comments that I'll make when I return on the 24th that I'd like to reserve regarding the manner and tenor regarding the meeting. And with that, those are the only comments that I have to give this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Mrs. Long?
Done at this time.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes, thank you. I do have a few. There was a press release issued today from Vida regarding the Lady Smith Road Route One project because they have to do some work on the water line. People to the west of Route One will have their water shut off on May 16th from 9:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And I suggest that's something the county put on the county alert system to make sure, you know, not all the county has good internet, so if we send it out, that's something they can all sign up to. And another issue on Lady Smith Road near St. John, that road has been closed, and I understand from Vida today just now that they've discovered some drainage problems and that project will not be completed by the end of May. It has been moved back to June. Mr. Shebal just informed me a few minutes ago that bids went out for the Carmo Church Fire Station. I'm trying with all self-control to hold my emotions and happiness down, but that is a great thing. I'm very happy to hear that. And last, we are adding, I believe, personnel to the second closed meeting. I don't know who has the motion, but that's something Mr. Colley's informed me of.
Okay, what is our, okay?
It's part of the motion, we're going to discuss performance review for the county attorneys.
Okay. Is that, is that part of, Mr. Colley, that's part of that second closed meeting? Yes. Okay, all right, thank you. All righty, I just have a few. First of all, I want to say Happy Belated Mother's Day to all the moms out there. I know that's a, that's a big day every year, and so thank to all the moms for what you've done throughout the years. I did, and I don't know if the Board looks at this at all, a lot of times I know it's, I glance through it, the county news newsletter, one of the things that, when you go through the, here, I think this was not the most current issue, is the April 18th issue. There's literally billions and billions and billions of dollars of money that's available to localities. And Mr. Colley and Mr. Parton, you know, we don't have a grant writer in our county, but I don't know how much of this applies to Caroline and different projects, but I would think that there's, you know, plenty of money that's out there right now that we should be trying to take advantage of. So maybe if we could scour this to see what could be used for anything that we're doing in Caroline or that we plan on doing on Caroline, because this would save our taxpayers a lot of money if we have a project coming up that we know that we're going to do, and if the money can be applied to one of those projects for the schools or whatever. Another thing I would like to, to talk about, and I had a discussion, I know I was the only one who voted against the budget last time. I asked from the schools information regarding, and you probably saw an email, the percent above required local effort that we are. And currently, the percentage is 4% above required local effort. And that, I don't think that's something that we should be proud of. We have challenges that we're going to have to face financially and deal with. As a teacher in Spotsylvania, I'll just be honest, it's all public information, but I signed my contract today in Spotsylvania for next year, and I'm receiving almost $7,000 more than I am this year. And the younger teachers are getting less, they're not doing a straight 7%, but the younger teachers are getting $3,000 to $4,000 more. So I know there's some challenges in the Spotsylvania County schools right now, but I think that's something that we're definitely going to have to start to address, otherwise we're going to be hemorrhaging teachers. And finally, the last thing, I don't know if anyone else in the Board has been, but I've been getting calls about the possibility of, I know we're taking it up tonight, about the lights for the softball field. And one of the things, and it's, you know, the parent brought up to me, hey, look, you know, you have a son that plays baseball and they can keep on going because their game is under the lights, so when it gets dark, they don't have to postpone a game, but yet for the girls, they have to postpone because at sundown, there's no lights on the field. So that's it, those are my comments. We will move on to amendments to the agenda. Do we have any amendments to the agenda at this time? Hearing none. I guess I will take a motion to approve the agenda as is?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And motion? Presentation reports. The first presentation we have tonight is from the Virginia Department of Social Services She is online. Okay? Good evening.
My name is Sharon Rochelle. Oh, I hope I can freeze. Are you able to hear me all right?
Yeah, we're, yes, we are, ma'am. It's just, we're having internet issues tonight, so it's kind of coming, it's going in and out, so it's a little bit choppy.
Okay, that's fine. If you're, if for some reason I'm not, you're not able to hear me, just let me know, because unless my face freezes, I'm not sure, you know, how much you're going to be able to hear when it stops, so. But it's no problem. I've had to deal with virtual for the last couple of years, so I'm well-versed in it. As I said, my name is Sharon Rochelle. I work for the Virginia Department of Social Services. My role there is the Central Regional Director, which means I oversee 26 counties within the central region of the Commonwealth of Virginia, one of which is Caroline County. So I talked with Director Sneed, and she said that you had questions or you've been in the discussion of an advisory local Department of Social Services Board versus administrative local services board. So I wanted to spend some time just reviewing them with you. However, I don't want to give you information that you already have. If you'd like me to review everything, I'm more than happy to, or if you would just like me to take your questions, I'd be glad to do that as well.
Okay, so we would, if someone has questions? Mr. Forehand? Mr. Seeley?
I thought we were going to hear some short presentation, so.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Sure, that's fine.
She's going to basically just tell us the difference between the two things.
Right, okay.
Is that okay, Mrs. Rochelle?
Okay. Yeah, that's fine. And so as I, as I go through this, I'm going to talk about each one and then the difference and how they compare to each other. There are some similarities, but there's also some major differences, and I just want you to be aware as you're making this decision what those are. So, so the two different kinds of boards are administrative or advisory. And administrative, you can have one or three-plus members. Typically, most counties, as they have districts, they'll have someone to represent them on the local Department of Social Services Boards. So if you have five districts, you would have five reps, including the Board of Supervisors rep as well. An advisory board can have anywhere from five to 13 members. And really, the word administrative, if you think of it more as supervisory, is really what it is. So an administrative board is, and the chairperson and the remainder of the board members really oversee the Department of Social Services within that county. So they have a lot of authority. They, and it doesn't always have to work this way within a county, but they can choose to make those decisions with the help of the director, or they can delegate those decisions to the director. But they oversee the department, and that is their role. Along with that, you know, they're, they have discretionary power over funding, they are looking at programmatic things as well as personnel performance. So it's, it's a lot for a citizen board to take on in the regard that I, and this is my opinion, I think social services in and of itself, no matter what county you live in, is very complicated. And I think people volunteer to be on the board to be able to do better things within their county, but if something were to happen and there was some legal action against the department, all of those, people on the administrative board could also be held accountable because they are, in fact, the supervisors. And they are, you know, so even if, even if they delegate that responsibility to the director, they are still as responsible as the director. So I just really wanted to emphasize that because as I've gone through, and I've done a lot of board training with new board members, and as much as we emphasize that, it doesn't seem, they don't seem to understand the, the control or the power or the responsibility they have in an administrative board. Advisory board is really just that. It's, you know, you're meeting, you're really the community, in both cases, you're the community spokesperson for the agency, you're kind of have your pulse on the community, you will report back, you know, during your board meetings or to the director, things that you're aware of that are going on, you know, just to make sure that as a community member, you're providing that input back to the department. And that can be both good information and sometimes it can be complaints that come through you and not through the director. So, and again, that's both boards, but you're really the person out in the community to speak about the good things that the Department of Social Services does, the programs. One of the first things, and my board changed over time, but when I was a director, is I sat down with all the members and I went through the different programs that are offered, and it wasn't that I expected that they would all remember all of them because they're very complicated, but I at least wanted them to have a high-level understanding of what the Department of Social Services did. I headed administrative board at the time, and the county that I came from had decided to go to an advisory board simply because of the liability that's placed on the administrative board members. So I've actually dealt with several counties now that have decided to go from administrative to advisory just because of that and the added pressure and understanding that administrative board member would have over advisory. So you really have to be very knowledgeable to be on an administrative board. My experience was, I think it was too much to ask those folks to do that. We did the best we could, but I've worked in this field for 30 years, and there's some days when I scratch my head, like, I still don't understand all the, you know, the complexities of it. So that's kind of it in a nutshell, other than as you're putting your, your board together, what's, if it's administrative or advisory, your Board of Supervisors rep is not a voting member. And the one thing to keep in mind, you always want to look at it as an odd number so that you don't, as you're voting on things, you don't want it to be a tie because there is no, you know, the Board of Supervisors member can't, you know, vote. So, you know, you want five, seven, you know, whatever the number is, so that you have an odd number to be able to have a majority vote. So that would be the other piece of advice that I'd have despite whichever administrative or advisory that you, that you chose. So with that being said, is, do you have any questions? I am very transparent, so I'd be glad to give you whatever it is that you're questioning the difference or what it means for the board members themselves.
Mr. Forehand? Either way. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
How many hours in a given week or month, however you would determine it, should an administrative board be meeting to make decisions and provide guidance?
So what the recommendations are, they say bimonthly. So that could mean twice a month, or it can mean every two months. My personal opinion is if you are an administrative board, you probably should be meeting twice a month or minimal once a month because there's so many things that can go on during that period of time that you really need to, you know, be involved. The advisory board, they, you know, it can, it can be a variety of things, but they're saying at least four times a year because your decision-making, you know, you want to be an advisory board, you want to meet around budget time because you want input on the budget. So there's certain times of the year that I think you do absolutely need to meet, but, you know, they're saying minimally four times a year for advisory.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Long?
Well, the requirements for administration for boards for meeting, and also on the voting thing, you said you needed to have an odd number, but we have six districts, so the supervisor makes it seven. So do, what's the regulation there?
So if you have somebody representing every, this is just my advice, there's really not a regulation, but if, if you do have an even number of folks on there, the Board of Supervisors member is still not a voting member. So you might either want to, if you want representation from your six districts, ask for a seventh person to be on there or go down to five, but, you know, you always, you always want to have an odd number just for voting purposes because you don't, you don't, there is no such thing as a tie. You have to make a decision based on your vote. And you had another question about administrative?
Mrs. Long?
You said administrative is bimonthly is the minimal meeting time?
Yeah.
How about for advisory?
Yes. Their advisory, they're saying four times a year, and I think it will, would depend on your county and what your expectations are from that advisory committee. If, if you have your director report back, you know, maybe every couple of months, I'm not sure how Caroline works it, to be able just to give updates on the department. If you want board members there, then, you know, I think it would depend on how you're setting that up. You do have some flexibility around that. But your administrative board should, they're really very involved. I, their, their responsibility and the director's responsibility is really even across the board. Advisory, it's really the director and the county administrator or the county manager that oversees the director, and the advisory board is really just there in that regard, just to give advice, feedback. Like I said, kind of their, they have the pulse on the community and be able to give that feedback back to the director and also be involved in the budget process when that comes around.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Ms. Rochelle?
Yes.
You said that one of the main things in the administrative, now you're with the state Department of Social Services.
That is correct.
So doesn't the state's liability coverage cover people in the administrative? I know the county has insurance that covers the sheriff's office and departments like that. Doesn't the state cover them since it's a state agency, basically?
The information that I have is the administrative board has the right to employ legal counsel in civil matters. So it would not be the state paying for that, it would be the county paying for that because the, the Department of Social Services is state-supervised, but it's county-operated. So just like the people that work for the Department of Social Services are county employees, they're not state employees, and the board is also a representative of the county.
Considered county. So the same would be true with advisory. If there was an advisory board and there was legal action against our local social services, the county would still be liable for any legal costs, right?
That's correct.
So we're liable for legal costs under both, both issues. One is our, our insurance would have to cover the, the people that are on the advisory, I mean, the ones that are on the administrative.
Chances are, yeah, chances are an advisory board, because you're not, you don't have the same influence or control that you do on an administrative board. I mean, anybody can sue anyone for any reason, so, you know, I don't want to disregard that. However, if you are on an administrative board and suit is brought against the Department of Social Services, it can be also brought against all of those local Department of Social Services Board members because, you know, the, the way that it's looked at is you have equal control. It's your responsibility as a board member and an administrative board to know what's going on, to know the ins and outs and how things are going and, you know, personnel matters. You know, it might be done in a closed session when you're talking personnel or some other issue, but you, you need to be aware, you need to be well-informed, and you will be responsible.
Oh, I understand that personally. I've been on the Board of Supervisors long enough to have been sued for some other things that we had nothing to do with.
Yeah, there you go. Yeah, it's a fun experience at all.
Could I ask Mrs. Sneed a quick question? Just, Mrs. Sneed, have we, have we, as the county, been involved in any legal suits lately? Oh, I'm sorry.
No.
She said no, okay. I'm sorry, Jeff, I would have delayed a little longer if I didn't know you were giving the portable mic.
I have a question.
Okay. Yep, Mr. Underwood, just, she's finishing up answering this.
Have, has the county been involved in any legal suits? The question was for Mrs. Sneed.
No.
Okay. Not since you've been here and not that, well, you've been here as director for a while and you worked here before you were director, right?
There was a break in between.
Okay, but not that you recall any time during your service?
Not, not since I've been there.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead to Mr. Underwood.
Mr. Underwood?
Yes, thank you. Sharon, I don't know your last name, I just see your first name, but you recommend that there be a seventh person. Would the Board of Supervisors then add an at-large person perhaps to make it seven? What do you recommend in terms of, and then the term that that person would serve? Can you give us some insight and direction as to what you think would be best there? Or should they have served equal terms?
Yeah, so the, a term on either board, whether it's advisory or administrative, this four years, you are required to go through a board training. Then you can do a second four-year term. Again, you have to redo your board training, but at the end of the second four-year term, so a total of eight years, you no longer can serve on that local Department of Social Services Board. So, but, you know, there, things come up and people end up not, you know, for whatever reason, they might resign, they can't do the four years, or, you know, things come up. So, you know, they, there is some leeway there, but the way that the regs specified, it's four years and a second four-year term, and that's the end of their time of serving.
Yes, and thank you. My second question is, knowing that you've served in your capacity for the past 30 years, do you see entities moving toward advisory versus, or the other way, administrative or administrative to advisory? Which way are people moving at this time?
So my experience more recently is they're going from an administrative to advisory.
Thank you.
And I think it really has to do with the amount of time and responsibility that a board member needs to take on an administrative board, and an advisory board is typically more of what their role is, unless somebody has been an employee in the Department of Social Services or has that, you know, knowledge, even in some of the program areas, I think it's just a very, very difficult thing to do. I think it's just a very, very difficult thing to do for a, a community board member, someone, you know, that is just doing it, you know, because they feel as though they want to make a difference. I, I will share this, I'm not going to mention any names, but there have been some, and, not in Caroline, but there have been other localities where there have been some egregious things that have occurred. And the county was sued, but also all of the board members were sued. And I went and talked with them, and it was an administrative board. And they had no idea that they were going to be, that they could be held accountable. And, you know, that this meant, you know, it was going to affect them and their families. And they were, I, I will just tell you, they were all very nervous and upset because they just did not realize what it meant. And that's why I think it's very important that when you make the decision of which you're going to have on your county, that people know exactly what they're getting themselves into. And I, I say it that way, but you have to have people that are very committed, that will take the time and that have that understanding.
And I just have one more question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Yes, go for it.
The amount of money that funds social services from the state, can you just maybe give me an idea of some of the smaller budgets versus some of the larger budgets? And if you know how Caroline fits into that scale?
So I don't have those figures off the top of my head, but I will provide those to you through Director Snead because the, the state puts out those numbers every year. So what it will do, it will break it down, how much money the county will get from the federal government, how much they get from the state. And that's, that's not just for, you know, the programs like SNAP and Medicaid. And it's also for the cost of operations and your budgetary amounts for the employees that work there. And then, then it also has the local share. So I will just tell you, and I don't know the numbers off the top of my head, but typically, the state and the federal government brings millions and millions of dollars into the county. And the county's share is usually typically very small.
Thank you.
But I will get those direct numbers to you.
I appreciate it.
Yep, no problem.
Mr. Thomas, did you have another quick follow-up before? I have a couple of questions.
Yes, if I, if I could, Ms. Rochelle, how long is the training that all these people go through?
So the initial training, they, there's, I want to say two or three sessions that are done online. And then we do an in-person training, well, in-person virtually, where we sit down and go over all of the, the different training modules that they went through. So we go through and highlight what their roles and responsibilities are, what the differences between an administrative and an advisory board. You know, we talk about budget. So we give them probably a high-level overview at the end, but, you know, we always have the opportunity for discussion. The nice thing is, we call that session "putting it all together", but usually the board members are from different counties, so it's an interesting mix. And we have some really good conversations about, you know, things that they've experienced or questions that they had, you know, from the online training. So, so it could be extended a little bit. It kind of depends what, what they put in. I think you, it was 120 days from the time that you were appointed, you had to finish your training. I think COVID put us a little bit behind the eight ball on that, so we have some flexibility there. And, and the problem isn't really so much getting the
Okay, but is the training?
online courses done, it's getting the, putting it all together, the in-person.
Is the training like an hour? Is the training an hour, is it like four hours virtual, you know, you know, computer-based training? You know, in terms of duration, how long is the training?
So I can check on the, the time for the, the modules, the, the virtual, but the putting it all together typically, at the end, the final one, it typically takes about an hour.
One hour? So?
The final one, yes, the one that we do in person.
So you spend an hour's worth of training for putting it all together and then tell these people that they're responsible for what happens?
That's, we, we try to emphasize that if it's an administrative board, that they understand what that means. I, I
Sounds like, um,
I just
Sounds, yeah, it sounds like you're giving somebody the keys to the Ferrari who doesn't know how to drive, and then you say you're, you're responsible if you have an accident.
Yep, that's, that's a good analogy.
Yeah, or somebody's got a fishing license and then that, well, all right. The other thing, how, how with an advisory board can you represent the diversity of a population such as Caroline? That's why we have six members, because some of Carolina is, we consider almost urban, and, and some of Carolina we'd consider extremely rural. So how do we do that?
Um, well, it's really up to the Board of Supervisors to pick the representative that you want from your district on, on the Department of Social Services board.
I mean, we've done that for, for the administrative board. I'm saying if we were to go to advisory board, how, how would we ensure we could represent the diversity of the county?
Same thing. You can, you can do the same thing. You can each pick a representative. And then maybe if you wanted to do an odd number, since there are six of you, maybe that's something that you can agree as a group of who that other person would be.
Okay.
But no, you can still select on an advisory board as well.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Mrs. Snead, I actually have, and Mr. Cully all having a question. What kind of training, as the lady mentioned up here, what kind of training have, has this board, in other words, have they been told about their liability? Has, has the board, when, when we picked them? Because I'll be honest with you, I, I mean, we, we get sued on decisions we've made. And I'm, I'm just wondering, does, does the board know? Or like, and as far as things like sovereign immunity and so, do they know that they can be individually sued or they're responsible?
I don't know if this works. Can you hear me? Okay. They've each attended in-person training that was held before the pandemic. And the newer ones have done the virtual training. So if it's in there, that's what they've been advised. Have I had a one-on-one conversation with them about their liability? No.
Okay. All right. My next question is for you. I mean, because you're the, you're the current leader of, I guess we have an administrative board right now. Can you give me your honest opinion? Because I don't think anyone's really asked you yet of, for you, what would be the difference and, on, in your, I mean, this is your personal opinion, obviously, we have to make the decision. But if we stay administrative verse, you know, go to advisory?
I've said to some of you, I think there are pros and cons to each. I think that historically, historically, it's worked as far as the administration, the agency, it's been able to take the board, the administrative board has been able to take appropriate action. It's good now. Thanks. The board's been able to take, ooh, that's loud, administrative action appropriately when staff changes have been needed, when issues have come up, they've gone to special meetings. I've just, I've seen them take a lot of action in the past to do what's necessary to take charge of operations of the agency.
Okay.
You know, we have an excellent county administrator at this time, and he lends a lot of support, and that's extremely helpful. I think it all depends on the knowledge and willingness to work with our agency as far as how things have gone historically between our agency and the county.
Okay. Can I, I'm going to follow up a question. How long have you been with, here in Caroline, working here?
I've been in this position since December of 2014, but I've worked on and off for Caroline Social Services since 1990.
Okay, so, um, yeah, so you have knowledge of the social services here in Caroline since 1990. Has this ever come up before? I mean, has this, has, has this been an issue, if you can remember at all, since 1990, that this has been brought up, that Caroline's thinking about switching? I mean, because we've been along through, I would imagine this is 1990, we've been through several county administrators, leaders of departments of social services. So I'm wondering if this has been an issue that has been brought forward before? Because I know in the past there have been, you know, I mean, there have been some issues. So I was just wondering, when, when those issues came up, or was this, was this ever brought to the Department of Social Services from the Board of Supervisors or the county in general? Hey, we're thinking about doing this. I mean, since you have experience since 90?
Prior to 2014, I might not have known those answers because I wasn't involved at that level. I was a worker for a lot of years, I was a supervisor for some years. So I don't recall that, but I can't say it wasn't ever discussed.
Mr. Parton, do you remember if this has ever come up before? I mean, you, you've been here for, I believe, 30 years?
I don't recall it ever coming up, Mr. Black.
Okay.
It's not to say it hasn't, but not to my recollection.
Okay. Mr. Cully, I just have one question for you, and then I'll be. I saw, and I saw in your, I saw your write-up, and I read the write-up there in the, in the board packet that you put forward to us about what happened previously in your, in your previous location. I'm just kind of curious, what is the, for a county administrator or something, what is the additional responsibilities that you have? Let's say we went to, from administrative to advisory, what, and a role of yourself and Mr. Parton and the leaders of the, of the county, how does that change your job?
We would replace everything that has to do with personnel oversight that the administrative board currently provides. So all those decisions that Wendy would have to coordinate with us to make sure that the, those are being carried out, on the upper-level ones and anything grievance-wise. I mean, so if there are personnel issues, they would all come to us like they do in every other department. That they don't now, they stop at the administrative board.
So how many employees are you talking about that we would be adding under your purview?
Thirty-seven.
So you'd be adding 37 county employees?
My, I wasn't, my write-up wasn't asking for this, my write-up was just explaining it.
Right, right, okay, I was just, okay. And then the, the last thing, I guess I have the lady from Department of Social Services. Ma'am, you had mentioned previously, and I was, if you could just go over this, how often, you had said that you had an example where the, the board members in an administrative board did not know about the liability issues. How often does a lawsuit like this, where the, come up? In your experience, how often have you heard about lawsuits like this around the state?
So I came from upstate New York. So I worked in Buffalo and Rochester prior to coming from Virginia. And I've been here for four years. And not that I've been privy to all those lawsuits, but I know that there, I am familiar with at least two.
In the last four years?
Yes.
Okay. Four, two in the last four years. Okay, that's all the questions. That's for the whole state of Virginia, ma'am?
Yeah, that's, that's as far as my knowledge goes. So I, I would only have what occurs in the central region. I would not necessarily know what goes on statewide. So it may end up being like in the eastern region or the western or the Piedmont region. There may be lawsuits going on there that I'm not aware of. And I can only speak to central.
Okay. I appreciate, we appreciate your time. And this has been very helpful, so thank you. Does anyone else have any questions?
Oh, you're very welcome.
Does anyone else have any questions?
And I'll get that information as far as the breakdown of the federal and state money to Director Snead.
All right, thank you so much. We appreciate your time.
Okay, you're very welcome. Have a good evening.
You too, thank you. How does the board, do we just want to move on with the, yes, that was just information? Thank you, Mrs. Snead, we appreciate it. All right, next up on the agenda, we have the next presentation, which is the tourism program. Ms. Beard? Mrs. Beard?
Good evening. Nice to see all of you, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Vice Chairman and members of the board. Thank you very much for this opportunity to present. It's been a little bit since I've been able to be here in front of you. So I hope that we can provide some information that's interesting as we have rebounding and coming out of COVID. I'm going to go back one. The first slide I'm wanting to present, obviously, is that your visitor center is a certified visitor center designated by the Virginia Tourism Corporation. That gives us some rights and privileges that not all visitor centers in Virginia have. You can see that we're open 362 days a year and that you've got five part-time people and one part-time tourism manager. Our annual visitor center tracking is at the bottom of that slide. Excuse me, since we've been open, we've seen more than 157,000 people. I will learn how to operate this. David, how do we go backwards? Okay. Go back, please, to the first slide. There we go. As you will note on this particular slide, about 2015, 2016, our numbers started falling off, and we were having a hard time getting traction at that particular point. That is about the time that the new Welcome Center up on I-95 opened up. And our traveler, who originally was from the 95 corridor, now passed by Exit 104 and continued on to the Welcome Center. We began to notice a trend about that same time of having an awful lot of repeat visitors coming up and down the 301 corridor. Folks had wised up about not wanting to travel on I-95 and using the 301-207 to hit not only our visitor center, but then to catch 95 at the 104. Next slide, please. Around 2018, we also noticed that King George was experiencing the same uptick in traffic on the 301. And we formed a partnership between the two organizations to really kind of collaborate on our visitor guide. This visitor guide since 2018 has given us the opportunity to print twice as many, to have a little bit stronger foot in the door with Virginia Tourism when we're applying for grants. And again, it's that repeat customer. Folks are up and down the corridor, meaning that they're coming through Port Royal and Bowling Green and into the visitor center. We're ready, next one. Kind of a hidden gem at the visitor center is our little gift shop. We present these numbers. So since 2008, we have sold more than $120,000 worth of items. Now, that's a lot of Afghans and a lot of handmade items that are made locally here in the county. We have certainly then returned more than the $83,000 that you see there on the slide back to those folks in our gift shop. We're pleased to do that, that is their commission. Our office only keeps 20% of whatever we sell, and that is just then to operate the gift shop. So that 33,000 number up there is not a bad number. As far as we're concerned, we're happy with that number because that's just the pure little number that we get off of sales in the visitor center. Wanted to bring up a little bit of history in terms of projects and types of things that we've done at the visitor center in the past. A few years ago, we did On the Trail of an Assassin. That was a sesquicentennial commemoration of the assassination of President Lincoln. We were very busy at the visitor center with bus tours, all types of things that we did with the National Park Service, and even created a Lunch with Lincoln event. More recently, in 2019, the Meadow Event Park hosted the International Airstream Rally in 2019. And if you had the opportunity to see more than 900 Airstream trailers parked out there at the Meadow Event Park, it was quite a sight to see. They were there for about a week. So once again, we developed all type of bus tours, hubbing out of Caroline at the visitor center, took those folks to DC several days, took them up and down through the Booth Saga, did all types of things with those folks. They bought tickets on those buses. Excuse me, and the proceeds went to the Sidney E. King Foundation and both Caroline and historic Port Royal. Excuse me, and the proceeds went to the Sidney E. King Foundation and both Caroline and Historic Port Royal Historical Societies. So it was a nice little bump for them as well. 2017, to go back to some of the grants that we've been fortunate to have secured from Virginia Tourism. In 2017, we rewarded the $10,000 grant for the commemoration of the World War I and World War II event in the state. We were very fortunate to have with us Mrs. Susan Sealy that put together the historical depiction of both all the families from World War I and World War II. And that particular video has been shown several places within the state. So we had events with elected officials, again, historical societies, veterans and their families. Currently, we have another $10,000 grant that we're working with, with our VTC Leverage Marketing Grant in conjunction with King George. And that, again, is to capitalize on the visitor guide because those folks coming in on 301, that is new money. That is not just moving money from Hanover around the jurisdiction. That's money coming in from Maryland and from the eastern seaboard. So we have a little bit better foot in the door when we are operating to do things on our 301-207 corridor. Real quickly here, wanted to show again some of the fun things that we've been doing at the visitor center. Certainly, we have entertained former presidents. You have seen our Caroline Middle School and elementary kids were invited to the visitor center to actually sit down and have a conversation with the former president and his, and his lady. And that was a very wonderful day. We've entertained Secretariat royalty, and there you see a picture of Penny Chinnery. That particular event was a heartstring event where Penny actually came back and hosted the grooms, groom's children and grandchildren at the visitor center so she could say hello to them. Our visitor center, every year, we are decorated by the local garden club in Caroline County. And we have a really good time when those ladies are there teaching us all how to decorate the visitor center. That bottom circle, a lot of buses used to, not so much during COVID, but used to drop in. That particular picture, one day, we had four buses of about 45 kids per bus that just dropped in unannounced. It was a delightful couple hours that they were running around the visitor center, and we had a good time with them. But more importantly, is that we take our visitor center booth to places that can't come to us. So these are all the places that we participate in every year, and this booth is actually mobile, and we go to where the visitor are, visitor might be. Wouldn't happen without Mr. Billy Holland and his crew because he has set us up and taken us down in some very interesting weather opportunities throughout the county. So hats off to Billy. Something that kind of goes on behind the scenes is that this area is scouted quite a bit for different types of films. My office, and me in particular, acts as the liaison for Virginia Tourism in their film office. These are a few of the films that we have actually worked on. And even with this operation, we can't do this without the support of the sheriff's office. Captain Carey is always first there to help us manage traffic, manage the crowd, or do whatever needs to be done in security in terms of these particular filming opportunities. And I had no idea about snakehead fish in the Rappahannock until we had the Meat Eaters website people in town in Port Royal wanting to get film of the possible snakehead in the Rappahannock. So we always have learned something along the way. This particular graph is something that is put together every year by Virginia Tourism Corporation. And I'd like to draw your attention to the 2019 year, our best year. You can see total expenditures by visitors exceeded 44 million. However, the following year, we write, we were starting COVID, and you can see what happened to the total expenditures by visitors in Caroline for the year 2020. The 21 numbers will be out the end of September, and I am sure that we're going to see that much of a percentage change or worse than what we experienced in 2020. So we had a great year in 2019, lots of things going on in the county, lots of activities, lots of events at the Meadow Event Park. And then we all went through 2020. So our targets. You can see on the far left, that is one of the ads that we are currently running. We are really wanting to strengthen the 301-207 corridor. We are advertising in publications, and I brought one for you to see, Recreation News, which has a circulation of over 100,000, and is more than that, is actually read online. This publication is distributed in all the federal buildings in the Washington DC metroplex. A lot of the visitors that we see at the visitor center are current or former federal employees, and they're aware of this particular publication. So we are running ads. We ran it in April. We ran one in March. April had to do with shopping and enjoying our art and antique corridor shopping trail. And I'll just hold up a little brochure that we've been distributing up and down the corridor into King George and into our antique and art stores. We just started it in April, but we've been running some of the folks out, and I've had to take more copies of the brochure to them. So it could be taking off. As Mr. Sealy mentioned, certainly the Doors to the Past is the history event that just started this past Sunday. They are currently in it for this entire week. Very much of a concentration of activity in Port Royal begins at the end of this week through Sunday. With Bowling Green, the Sidney E. King Foundation and the Caroline Historical Society, they're working to do walking tours of Bowling Green, and so they are participating too on it, on a limited effort. Our targets, as I was going to say earlier, we have been awarded through an, an application process, $130,000 that we have to create a marketing initiative plan and submit it at the state and federal level. It's like the ARPA grant monies that the county has always been involved with, but this is specifically for new marketing initiatives and only for tourism. So those, that application process is still ongoing. And as I mentioned, the Recreation News marketing publication that we are still very active in, you see, we're trying to deal with art and antiques and different kinds of trails. As we deal with the History Comes Alive participation, the Doors to the Past, we're hoping that that becomes an annual event. We have money in there in terms of sponsorship with King George and with Westmoreland Counties, and we're hoping to move those folks more, you know, certainly around the county more often. Another opportunity that we were starting to explore is that we have a very, very strong agricultural industry in the county. And certainly beef and pork and chicken production is strong, and we do have opportunities to really create a farm-to-table type of program. So we'll be looking at that. The final thing that's on our target list at this point is to really be a lot stronger in our social media platforms. The last couple of years have certainly taught folks, that's how you get information. You not necessarily wait for visitor guides or some of those things, although people come into our visitor center and take the visitor guide. But to find out what's going on online first as they travel, whether you're looking at hotel rooms or you're looking at where to eat, those social platforms that we need to deal with need to certainly be enhanced. So with that, that concludes my presentation this evening, and if I can offer any answers to any questions you might have.
Very good. Mr. Underwood, I'll start with you. Do you have any questions? Can't, Mr., can't hear him.
Yeah, I was on, I was on mute. I do have a question from Mrs. Beard. First question, Mrs. Beard, if you had a, if you could push one program that would give us the biggest results, knowing that COVID has impacted your visitation, what program should we push further, and what would be the means to do that?
It would certainly be our social media efforts. Utilizing those platforms for events, for specials at restaurants, for things that are going on in the community, and reaching out would be our way to do that. Our local folks know pretty much what's going on with different types of things, but to have, to reach past our boundaries, that would be where our focus should be.
Would you, would you be able to put together an action plan and a cost for that?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Forehand?
None, sir.
Dr. Sealy?
Yeah, I know tourism is, is one of those things that is going to evolve again after COVID. And now with the price of fuel, I've got a feeling it's going to put even a bigger damper on some of the initiatives that have been planned, even, even for this gateway to history or the, the future, the backdoor to history with gas at 450 a gallon. People traveling is probably going to be a lot less. So I guess it'll be interesting if you could just keep track of some of the numbers for us of who's passing through the visitor center, and if we have any idea from which direction. There's no way we're gonna, we're gonna drive that train any differently. People moving about with the price of fuel is going to be purely discretionary. So it'll be interesting to see where our numbers go. And if you could just keep us up, you know, give us, you know, just a rough order of magnitude of numbers quarterly just to see where we're going. I think that'd be really helpful. But thank you.
Certainly.
Mr. Thomas?
Sure, thank you. Mrs. Beard, didn't, didn't the King George Visitor Center close there?
Yes, sir. They currently are working on the construction of the bridge. They are looking for an alternative site, but they do hope to be able to manage that existing facility once the construction moves out of the way by about the end of the summer. So it's kind of hit and miss with them a little bit during construction.
And, and the bridge construction is moving along. I haven't been there in a while, but I, I know it's moving along and should be open next year sometime?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll see a lot more traffic coming through King, uh, King George and Port Royal towards the county. A couple of things, because tourism is a, you know, big thing to me. You remember back when we had a tourism committee, I was always, you know, one of the ones there. I'd like to see that, like, some yearly activity that we focus on every year.
Okay.
You know, this is, this is the year we're going to do such and such. We've got so much here, and, and maybe you could, in, in advance of things, you know, talk to folks. I know there's new ownership at the Old Mansion, you know, where Washington was. There's the, the John Wolf's Booth Tours that we used to do. I, I think we need to kind of publicize those a little bit more, you know, to try to make it an everyday thing or an every-year thing. People go on vacation, they drive through Caroline, they stop at, you know, the Old Mansion, they stop at whatever, based on a timeframe that, you know, you could help set up. And that the, the other thing, and one that, that really is important, we used to have a Holiday Inn Select, I believe it was, in Carmel Church. And hotels in Carmel Church, I'm trying to look for polite words, have kind of, you know, gone down in quality.
Yes, sir.
That's not really the word I wanted to use, but that's kind of good. But the, the reality is, they are, they are not something that I would recommend somebody to, you know, visit the county and stop and stay there, and, and we lose a lot of business.
We do.
So what I, you know, what I'd mentioned to you before is, maybe we could have some sort of tourism certification program. You know, you could talk to those folks and say, hey, we're going to have a tourism certification program. We'll get you more business if you increase the quality of your hotel. You know, some can, some can't, but that's something you can advertise and say, Hotel X is a tourism-certified hotel, you know, and people would probably stay there, you know, if they visit your website. And, and the, the last thing, since I, I go by Carmel Church a lot at, at night, we spent, well, we didn't spend because we got it as a gift. We got that giant whale, which somebody at the school named Spauticus.
Yes, sir.
Could you please put an LED light on that so we can see it at night?
Yes, absolutely.
We don't. There's no light on it. I go by and, you know, it's reflective glass, so you can't see it in the daytime, but I ought to at least be able to see it at night.
Yes, sir. We have interior lights, but we can certainly enhance that so that it is more visible at night.
If you could, if you could get some LED lights and put them actually on that whale skeleton, which comes from Caroline.
It does.
Um, we could, we could at least get people curious. You know, you might be closed when they ride by, but when they come back in the daytime, they'll say, what's that? And we can get more people in and kind of direct them. There's, there's just so much in tourism that I think we can do. That's, that's why I asked Mr. Wilson to have you here, so we could kind of focus on that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mrs. Law?
Yes, thank you, Kathy. Nice, nice report. Whatever you all are doing, it's working because traffic's definitely picked up down my way. I may tell you not to do such a good job if it keeps up. But I will tell you, I appreciate everything that you, you do. I think I agree with Mr. Thomas on, on his ideas and anything we can do to support you. But he is absolutely right. Coming through at night, it's dark down there near your, near the visitor center, and some lights on that big glass showing him out would either scare people or make him come back and, and want to see it and, and give him an easy landmark to find your, your building by. So that should be an easy fix. Also, do you have a specific link on our county website for tourism, for events and things?
Yes, yes, ma'am, we do. We have our own subset website. It's visitcaroline.com. So you can reach us from the county site. You can go to visitcaroline.com, which you can then reach the main county site. So we do, we have links all over.
All right, great. Thank you.
I just have a couple. Do you guys do anything with, because I know, like, Fredericksburg is, obviously, people go to downtown Fredericksburg quite often to see the battlefields. It's a tourist hotspot for people who are into history, Civil War history. Do we have any partnership with, as far as tourism up there, as far as, hey, you know, any regional thing, like, hey, even though you're here for the Civil War battlefields, this is going on in Caroline? Or, you know, something where they would direct people towards Caroline for anything? Is there anything up there with that?
We do have a relationship in that we exchange visitor guides. We also have, they now have a new Assistant Director of Tourism, MC Morris. And so we are very involved in trying to share people back and forth. We do have the Stonewall Jackson Death Site, and that site does draw a lot of attention, certainly from the park service plans that currently are in Fredericksburg. In addition to that, we own the Lincoln Booth Saga. So we have in the past, when motor coaches were prevalent, and we could certainly do stuff with coaches, we do run tours from the Maryland site all the way through King George, where we came across it there at the Daubert and that act on the river and through Claydale and down through us to the Garrett Farm. So we have established that foothold in terms of two of those particular things.
Now, is that just, I'm just out of curiosity, because like, we also have, and I don't know if this is not tourism-related, but kind of is, is we also have the Meadow Event Park as far as the concert series is concerned and so forth. Is that something we promote too, or some of the businesses as well? Because that's a, like, the concert series is a destination, like, you're going to want to go to the concert series. Or just, for example, when the, the park there, the, what am I looking for? The one on Route One, the, the baseball park, when that's, you know, when that's up and running and running well and so forth. I mean, destination places here in Caroline, do we promote that as well?
Yes, we do. And we have had opportunities with the, with the current, over previous to this one, to help assist with tours and type things like that, and to invite folks from Legacy Park to the visitor center and, and to have information about what there is to do in Lady Smith and up and down the corridor. Transportation sometimes gets a little twitchy for those baseball teams, but we are after the families that currently are staying primarily in jurisdictions to our south, again, for some of the lodging opportunities, you know, that they will find one county down. So it is a, it's a challenge. It's a challenge we're looking to get back into with the park reopening, Legacy Park reopening.
And then the final thing is, and, and once again, this isn't necessarily a destination, but when you look at the statistics and numbers every month that comes out that Mr. Wilson shares from afar as far as housing costs and so forth, I mean, we're a very transient area.
Yes.
Uh, as far as people moving in and out, and, you know, Caroline is, in comparison to a house in Stafford or comparison to a house in Pennsylvania or Fredericksburg, Caroline's cost of living is, is way cheaper. Do we, do we promote that? Is there any way that that is promoted as far as, hey, look at Caroline, you have the, we have these opportunities? And, you know, I mean, you can get a great house for X amount of dollars, or do we, do we do anything with that at all?
Mr. Wilson, a few years ago, did that and reached out quite strongly to the realtors of the region to let them know comparative costs and the, how close, you know, Caroline is to anywhere that they want to be. So we have certainly done that, you know, in the past. We have welcome packets, that we do have a lot of realtors that do come into the visitor center just picking up information for their clients. So we actually develop welcome packets that has that statistical information as well as everything there is to do from the walking tours in Bowling Green, you know, to the trails that we have in the county for exercise. county for exercise outside. So it's getting there.
Yeah, I I just think for that, I mean, as far as, we have subdivisions here in Caroline that are, you know, that, not like we're having a hard time filling them up, but I mean, Lady Smith Village and Pendleton and so forth. I I would think that that you can get a huge amount of house for your buck right now in Caroline compared to Stafford or or the other jurisdictions. So I was hoping that maybe Mr. Wilson, we can get on that and promote that as well, because it is, it is, I know the economy is forcing forcing people here, but I, you know, I just to let people know that it is an option.
Certainly.
Could I, could I ask one other thing? If if staff, Mr. Cully, and and probably you'll give it to Ms. Smith, if we could get the transient occupancy tax for like the last few years, maybe we need to go back like ten years. I'm sure we've got it. But if if we get that, that'll give us an indication, because the more people we put in hotels, the more county money we get. And that goes, it's only 2%, but that goes to help more tourism. And I think schools was part of that, too.
It certainly is. That 2% goes to your general fund for whatever, however you designate. That's right. That's right.
Okay.
So it's, just in closing, we'd just like to remember, to remind everyone, certainly to shop locally and to dine out and eat locally. Tourism has been hit hard over the last couple of years. We're not out of it yet. It's gonna possibly rear its head, not necessarily with us locally, but people traveling into our area from the Eastern Seaboard, which is the majority of the visitors that we have at the visitor's center, they're impacted. So anything we can do for our local business space is where we're focused.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, can I get a, can I get a motion for the consent agenda? Or someone like to pull anything that dealing with the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Like to look at F. All right. So we're gonna look at F. Does anyone have anything else that they would like pulled?
Chairman, I'd I'd move the adoption of consent agenda items A through E and G through J.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion.
Where do you want to put F?
Motion carries. You just wanna, you just wanna talk about it right now?
Just a few questions.
Yes, Mr. Mr. He just has a few questions on it. So we'll just go ahead and tackle that right now.
Yes, sir.
Couple of things. We approach schools regarding this generator?
We had a meeting with the schools to cover a variety of issues, but during that, we brought that up about the generator because of the, we didn't have a good place for, to do the heating. It's warming centers when we had the storm.
Okay. Is, is Mr. Sealy, I spoke about this briefly, but is this something that would, we would utilize the, their existing infrastructure and we would just power it electrically?
Yeah. So what we're looking to do is, because that new gym building is its own separate building, that's kind of ideal for a shelter. It doesn't have the ability for people. We can close it off so they don't filter and wander into the schools. When we use some of the other schools, like the Governor's School this year, it's hard to keep people in a centralized area because there's no gates, there's no separation of the building.
Okay.
So we're looking to just power, the county's interest is to power that gymnasium annex, if you will, lights, outlets, and heat for that portion of the building. The schools have some interest in powering some IT infrastructure. And if we're gonna shelter people, we certainly want to give them internet today. That's kind of a mandated thing to maintain control. So there is some shared interest there. But really, that's the the crux of the grant was to go after shelter improvement, and that falls within that. So we're placing an existing generator, well, the one that's larger, to add that additional capacity. And I think the school will use the existing generator at their school board office as part of their COOP plan, continuity operations, to make sure that's up and running.
All right. You've answered a couple of other questions as part of that answer.
Yes, sir.
Because I was wondering what what the school had to benefit from this and why they were paying, you know, whatever they're supposed to pay.
All their IT infrastructure runs through the high school, so having a more robust system to put stuff on there, I think, is in their benefit as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Sealy?
Are we gonna go with natural gas with this generator since natural gas is at that facility?
Yeah, that was our first take. But the problem with natural gas on a generator, you have to upsize your generator because of the efficiency. So diesel is a much more efficient product for that and producing power. We don't have to have as large of a motor. We have a ninety-hour tank on that diesel generator at full capacity or full load. So we went with diesel. It, I understand it makes sense to go natural gas, but at the end of the day, we would be at a much higher cost than four hundred and twenty-five thousand to do that. Ninety hours, I believe we can get refueled. I don't think we're ever gonna meet peak capacity on that generator. So that generator will go much more than ninety hours as we do in other places that we have emergency power.
It just seemed like a shame since natural gas is there, you'd never have to fill it, and it could come on once a, once a week and run.
Right.
So we really don't want to do that, huh?
Nope. It's gonna, it'd be, it'd be a much larger generator, a lot, much larger, even more costly setup.
How much larger? How much larger, Jeep?
I'd have to do, I I don't know the math, math on that. I'd have to look.
Fifty percent larger.
Probably thirty percent, not.
I was gonna say twenty-five percent, probably.
Yeah.
Twenty-five percent cost or?
Generator capacity.
Yeah, but I'm saying.
I don't know about cost. And here, and the other thing is getting a generator and the timeframe of the grant.
Yeah, right.
So we have held a generator that's diesel, that's, you know, three hundred and fifty KW. But ninety hours, that's.
Almost four days.
Yeah. And that's at peak on the generator. We're never gonna push three hundred and fifty KW on that generator with lights and outlets in a school. The, the school is powered by natural gas, so all the big systems, all your hot water heating, all of that is natural gas. So you have minimal load on that generator.
So you just run on lights and outlet?
Pretty much.
So it could really run more than ninety hours?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And if we're stuck in, you know, in the warming shelter for a week, we're probably gonna have bigger problems.
We got bigger problems. We can't get gas for everything else or diesel for everything else that runs on diesel.
Okay.
So I think it's a good decision.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Mr. Underwood?
None.
Mrs. Long? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve F then?
You're good, Mr.
Got a motion to approve item F on the consent agenda?
Yeah, second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, those opposed, all right, motion carries. I was wondering if the board would entertain, because we're at, we're pushing the public comments. Do we have time to do number seven? And then go straight to public comments? We'll take our break after public comment? Because I don't want people to, or we can go into a closed session. I think number six is gonna take a, quite a bit of time. So number, is it possible to sneak in number seven? All right. So let's go ahead then. I don't see any.
Thanks, five minutes.
Yeah, yeah. So let's go ahead and go ahead with number, agenda item number seven. And I think Mr. Sheville?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Item number seven is dealing with allocating additional funds to the Dawn wastewater system. And this is due to us having additional connections that cost us more money to be able to put those in. We've been reimbursed for those connections. However, I can't take those funds and allocate those. Only the board can do that. So I have spent more money out of my budget, and I can no longer buy pumps. And Ms. Smith is holding up purchase orders because I have no funds. So I'm asking that we take the reimbursed funds from those connections and apply that back into our accounts.
So, Ms.?
Mrs. Smith is doing her job, then. If you don't have any money, you can't.
She is. She's doing a good job.
Thirty-five thousand dollars.
Well, they've got fifty, so in collections.
Yeah.
And there was a motion and a second.
There was a motion, there was a motion and a second.
Nancy made a motion, please second.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. And the, any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right. So how about we do this? We're at, rightfully, right at, we're at seven twenty-seven.
Seven.
Yeah. So can we go ahead and at least start the public comments at seven? It's close enough, right? We can, can we, can we officially start like a couple of minutes early? Yeah, that's fine. So let's go ahead and do public comments, and we'll go into closed meeting, if that's okay with the board. All right. So we'll go ahead and start the public comment period. If anyone has anything that they would like to discuss, please come forward and just state your name and your voting district. And we will move forward. We don't have any public carries tonight, though.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman. My name is Antonio Klinkskills. I'm standing here on behalf of Lifeway Services, which is an outpatient mental health counseling company here in the county. We formulated in 2020, and we have been operating ever since. I'm standing, asking and seeking support from the board to support our summer program. Before the pandemic, we operated our summer program, and it was very successful. But we were only able to service just a small number of students at that particular time. We have, we're seeking to expand. We partnered with four area churches. I didn't state my voting district, which is Western Carolina. I want to throw that in there. But County Line Baptist Church, Bowling Green Baptist Church, Third Monzalian, and Second Baptist Church. So we have partnered with churches around the county so that we can expand the service of our summer program with the specific intention of addressing the social emotional needs of our students. We're targeting middle-aged school students who have been impacted the most from the pandemic and the return to learn in-person school. So we have, I have some information to share with the board to give you some more detail about our summer program, some of the things that we're seeking to do. But the difference between most summer programs, this, we have trained and licensed and qualified professional staff that will be implementing the activities for the summer program. Again, we're addressing the social emotional needs of ten to thirteen-year-old or middle school age students. And as well as, we have a parent or guardian or grandparent component that will be a part of the program as well. So we're not just meeting the needs of the students, but we're also addressing the family. And that is a key component that is necessary in the health and well-being, not only of the students, but the family at large. And so I'm standing and would like to present our proposal to seek assistance from the board.
Okay. Mr., do you have some information for us?
I I do have some information, and I do want to share with the chairman that I did email you the proposal this evening so that you would have it as well.
Okay. Thank you. If you could, Mr. Partner, if we could just get that, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Klinkskills. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone, is there anyone else who would like to speak during public comment?
Hi, I'm Michael Humeick. I'm a resident of Caroline County. I live in Woodford. I don't know the name of the district. I just know where I vote at. But this concerns, it's an old topic. It's the Board of Equalization. And I just want to say that I'm here tonight to bring to the attention the failure of Caroline County's system for accountability and property assessment values. The Board of Equalization, the Commissioner of Revenue, and the County Administrator have all negated any responsibility in addressing the basis of property values which property taxation is based upon. The Board of Equalization and county officers need to be held accountable to the responsibilities as outlined in the Code of Virginia. In May of 2021, I appealed at a hearing of the Board of Equalization to contest my property assessment. I presented evidence of comparable sales and assessments and was told the board is only concerned if property square footage is incorrect. They further stated, quote, "They cannot question what the assessor did to come up with the value of my property." And of course, they denied my appeal. I approached the Commissioner of the Revenue with this same issue, and they punted, and they directed me to the County Administrator. The County Administrator punted also. He directed me to the clerk of the court. Today, I went to the clerk of the court, and the response is, they punted also, and they said they are not responsible for anything other than swearing in the BOE. Tonight, I stand before you, the Board of Supervisors, having pursued and exhausted every avenue within the county government, as I still have no assistance on regarding how my property assessment valuation was determined. So please help me. Please fix these failures of the Board of Equalization. Please take action so no other county taxpayer or resident of Caroline County has to experience what I have in trying to determine information on how the property assessment valuation is determined. In short, I went through the BOE with my appeal. I had about twenty pictures on cardboard posters. And I started my appeal process and talking to them. Now, I had these prior sales that are within the stated timeline from the code, and I had their assessments in which they cut me off. And they said, we are not here about the value of your property. We are only here in case your square footage is wrong on your property or your home. And they quote, the chairman of the board said, I'll say it again, this board cannot question what the assessors did to come up with the value of your property. What was the point of the hearing? Why did I go to the Board of Equalization? All we gotta do is go to Mr. Bassoon's office and show him my plaque and get a calculator and say the square footage is wrong, or show him the blueprint of my house. And doo-doo-doo, the square footage is wrong. What was the purpose of going to the BOE? The Code of Virginia, which everyone referred me to, this isn't what the Code of Virginia is about. It's not about square footage, but the, about the Board of Equalization doing their job, which is knowing construction practices, construction values, cost of materials, and knowing prior assessments and current values. But none of that mattered, even though it's in the code. All they said was, we don't really care about square footage. So something resurfaced a couple of months ago that made me relook into this. And I requested a copy of the recording of my hearing so I could hear it again, which I wrote it down and just told you what they said. So what is, since Mr. Bassoon punted, said it's not my job, the County Administrator said it's not my job. So I went to the clerk of the court, and she goes, I swear I'm in. This isn't my job. Who's gonna fix this problem? Who's gonna make it so somebody else doesn't go through what I do?
Okay.
How are these things gonna get assessed properly?
All right. Thank you. It's sort of the times up. But we will, Mr. Cully and Mr. Bassoon, if you could get with this gentleman and 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 talk to him, we would, we would greatly appreciate it.
They already talked to me. They punted.
Okay.
So that's why I'm here.
Okay. So hopefully, they can get you a clearer answer.
I'm here for you to tell them to do their job.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak regarding county business?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Kenny Moore. I live on Partlow Road in the Western Caroline District. Own properties in Mr. Forehands and Mr. Seely's and Mr. Black's district as well. Folks, tonight, I want to thank you, number one, for the improvements that you all have made at the Caroline High School softball team, for the stadium improvements last year. Those safety improvements were much needed and very much valued and appreciated. It's my understanding that there was a $250,000 allocation made for that project. Mr. Whitman, we appreciate your help in that effort as well. And there was significant savings. I believe that the number that he threw out was a hundred and fifteen thousand spent with about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars left. So my, I'm coming to you all this evening. We've got this extra money that's laying there. There's a couple of concerns that I have as a parent here. Again, I grew up in Caroline, went to Caroline High, played baseball. I've coached Little League for over twenty years in the county. We are the only softball stadium in the district that does not have lights on their stadium. So softball season starts in February. We have to cut practices short until time changes so that we can, you know, play before it gets dark, of course. Also, during the regular season this year, we've had seventeen games. We've had a fair turnout. But I think the turnout could be much better if we had lights. Every away game that we have starts at six, but our home games have to be at five because we simply don't have lights to facilitate a full game. We've had an instance this year where the varsity team had a rain delay for an hour. They punted and went over to, to use a gentleman's term a little while ago, they went over to Little League Park this, for that game and had to wait two hours to get on the field because they were waiting for other games to finish up. So my request to you is this. I would ask that you seriously consider supporting our youth in this county. We've got a great group of young ladies. Two of them are ranked in the top one hundred in the nation right now, and they're middle schoolers. Let's give these ladies something to be proud of. And if we need to get businesses to step in, and whether it's Dominion Power to do pole installation or electrical hookups, we'll be happy to help, whatever we've got to do to make that work. So I'm coming back to you this evening to ask the question, is that something that we can revisit? And what do you need from me? Or what can we do to move forward? we can revisit and what do you need from me or what can we do to move forward to make that happen? Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Is there anyone else who would like to? Speak.
My name is Dr. Jawanda Rollins Fels. I'm from the Reedy Church District and the Chair of Caroline County School Board. I'm before you tonight to bring to your attention a couple of matters of immediate concern. First, the level funding of schools. The action requested is reconsideration of our CCPS request for 3% of accounting contribution, totaling $1.1 million that will provide a COLA to all employees. I went back and I watched the videos of our public meetings, our joint board meetings and the budget workshop. As a matter of professional development and board development, I'd encourage us all to review these catalogs as well. Encouraging were the questions that were asked for clarity, but honestly frustrating was watching the perpetual logical fallacies that strung through the conversation. There was a tendency for us to unpack, repack, posture or dismiss the dissemination of pertinent information that was accurate in some occasions and others not necessarily so. I say that to say that we must look up. Caroline County is not in a vacuum and as conservative as we pride ourselves in being, we cannot be ignorant to what is happening in education as an industry. The national teacher shortage is beyond critical. Universities reporting a few dozen education graduates means that the pipeline is beyond vulnerable. We must retain and we must recruit. Similar to personal development, CCPS has and continues to do the tough inner work within our division. We are asking the tough questions and we are actually listening to the answers. We are using the data to drive our decisions and in some cases, we are even owning the ugly truth. Regardless of the tact or professionalism, the tension or whatever, we don't allow the message to get lost in the mess. If there is a thread of questions that have come before us, we have done the work of going back to make sure we have the information provided in our next meeting. The bottom line is the community in this county cannot afford for the fragility of education and the reality there to go unaddressed. We must provide appropriate funding for salaries and the COLAs to be addressed. There is an influx in state funding, county funding and COVID funds and an increase of local revenue of about $4 million despite the elimination of certain fees and reductions of taxes. So the fact is that there are funds available. So the requested action is to fund the 3%. The last thing I'd like to share in my last 10 seconds is a request for a joint board meeting for us to address accounting and an increase in effectiveness and efficiencies. We are both duly elected boards and we both have highly qualified staff, which we both respect, that we've empowered to bring us accurate information so we can make informed decisions. I don't know if you saw the board meeting last night, but it was brought to my attention that we have some issues that we must address. So I'm asking for a meeting that we can create a plan so that we can streamline and make sure that we have accurate information coming forward from both boards. Those are my comments for this evening. Thank you for your request of funding our budget.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair and members of the board. My name is Nancy Carson. I'm from the Reedy Church of the Mattapanah District. I want to thank the Broadband Committee for their hard work and diligence in scoring grants or grant to help bring broadband to Panola Road. It was truly a wonderful sight to see the fiber optic sleeves laid all the way down to the railroad tracks on my road. I am a firm believer that finally we will get internet. I was able to get my refund from Elon Musk, knowing that in the near future, I won't have to switch out three different MiFi's to get internet. But on a different note, I want to thank the supervisor from the Ladysmith area who supported raises for Caroline County public employees. Most of the surrounding counties' boards of supervisors have generously increased salaries to their school systems as they understand the importance of retaining, recruiting and rewarding employees. It's very sad that the same sentiment is not shared by the Caroline County Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carson. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening. I'm George Spinner. I'm from the Mattapanah District. I was just curious if this is the opportunity I would take to talk about the property tax, the personal property tax, or should I wait till later on?
You can talk about that.
Okay. The only thing I really wanted to say is that it's my understanding that the equalization rate would be $3.05 and I think that sounds pretty fair. The other thing is that as we're meeting, so is Henrico County and they're setting their rate at $2.98 as an equalization rate. I also wanted to say to Mr. Thomas that I think the words you're looking for for the hotels are either unattractive or slightly seedy. And I also wanted to say that for the tourism, whenever I tell anybody that I'm from Caroline County, I always preface it with saying that we're famous for an assassin and a horse. That usually gets me additional questions asked so I get to tell them the other attributes of Caroline County. So thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Spinner. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the Board of Supervisors. How are y'all doing today?
Well, thank you.
Very well. My name is Joanie Rollins Davis and I used to be in the Madison District, I think, Mattapanah, and I think I'm over here with Mr. Forehand now. And I am standing, representing the Juneteenth Committee, members in Caroline County and a large portion of the citizens in Caroline County to invite you all to our Juneteenth Affairs. We are having a Juneteenth Sunday service, June the 12th, at Second Baptist Church where Bishop Arthur Wertz and First Lady Sandra Wertz are pastor and first lady. And this is an event that's open to the entire county. And then on June 18th, just like we have done the last two years, we are hoping to continue to celebrate this national holiday at the Caroline County Park behind the high school. So this is a open invitation to you all, the Board of Supervisors. Abigail Spanberger, our Congresswoman, she will be, she will be present along with some other dignitaries that have already called and asked to come to Caroline. So hopefully we will see you there. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Good evening, Chair and Vice Chair and other members of the board. I am Jesse Rollins from the Mattapanah District and I would just like to use this opportunity to, to speak personally on watching how things are unfolding within our community when our boards come together. It is just very disheartening. I have been a part of our education system. I think I'm the last person that can say that I walked through the doors of Don School with Jenny Thomas. I have a mother and a grandmother that were all about education. I have a grandmother that spoke to the board in King William County, encouraging the board to send the bus a little bit further down the road for the brown-skinned children, one of which was her daughter that had to walk to school. I'm grateful for the white bus drivers that picked them up and they had to lay low and he carried them a few miles up the road as long as he safely could do it. And so education and knowing the struggles that my grandmother and my mother shared with me growing up created the heart and passion that I have for education and for our children. As we wind down with the 2020 school year, I want you to think about what it is to be a teacher, a bus driver, a custodian, a cafeteria worker, a principal, leadership board, and knowing that all the decisions that you make affect over 4,000 kids in your community. I have a new teacher in the family. She's been in Head Start since she was three years old. Bless her heart, she's still in school. And I'm the one that's there to wipe the tears when she comes home because some days it's just so hard because our children's behavior is, is, they, they need time to get back into the mode of school. And I'm grateful for every teacher, every school staff person, regardless of the role that they play, that we have rolled up our sleeves and post-COVID, we have shown up every day to show these children how much we care. I talked to a young man helping to serve hot dogs last week at Bowling Green, encouraging in him to be the young man that he know he is. His friends found out he was adopted and so he has some issues. I talked to some kids that thought it was kind of funny to tape something on the back of a young lady's jacket. Yeah, I reamed them. I gave them to Ms. Rollins, one, two, three, four, and then I picked them up and I encouraged them to show up. They'd be middle schoolers next year. But I need our boards to work together to send a message to our children, our parents, our educators, to our community, that our children are worth us working together. And so I encourage you as we move forward and y'all have your meetings and you discuss the things that you discuss, think about the children and how we as adults need to show them how to come together, have our differences, have our opinions, have our feelings and have our thoughts, but that we are not ugly to each other and that we keep them at the forefront. When the focus stops being on children, it is time to move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Seeing no one else, I will close the public comment time. Board, can we have a motion to go in a closed session?
Mr. Chair, I move that this board-
Mr. Sealy? Could I just clarify one thing? You have two motions before you, I believe, in draft form and my understanding is that you want to split your closed session into two separate meetings tonight. And the first one labeled number one gives you two options and I just drafted this way because I didn't know what you wanted to discuss in closed session. The first is whether you have any legal questions about the personal property tax issue. If you do want to ask legal questions about that in closed session, that language is in there. If not, you wouldn't need to include that as a basis for your closed meeting and you would just read number two regarding the solar application. So it's, it's up to you. It's, it's a matter of whether you want to discuss that in closed session or not.
How does the board wish to proceed with that?
Well, here's my question, is this doesn't match? Okay, never mind, it's further down.
And the second closed session for, again, it's entirely up to you how to do it, but the second closed session for the end of the meeting addresses the, of the land acquisition and personnel issues.
Okay.
How does the board like to proceed? Would like to talk about both topics?
If we could, let's do the, the first one, which I guess will give us enough time.
Well, there's two within the, well, there's two within the-
I don't, I, I don't know about anybody else, but I don't need any legal interpretation on personal property tax. I think we got that already, or at least I did.
Anybody else?
I, I would, I do-
Well, if we did-
And we don't do, we can do it not needed.
Mr. Underwood.
If we take the opportunity to go ahead and, and do the first motion, if there are questions, we can answer those during closed session. If there are none, we can, we will say we have addressed it and come out and we will address items one and two, both items.
That's, yeah, that's fine. Exactly, I agree with Mr. Underwood. All right, so can we, Mr. Sealy, could you read both, please?
I move that this board convening closed meeting pursuant to consulting with legal counsel and contract exemptions of Section 2.2-311(a)(829) of the Code of Virginia for consultation with, consultation with the county attorney and discussion with staff regarding specific legal matters associated with personal property taxes and pending solar applications as well as a negotiation of related project siting agreement where decisions in open meeting would adversely affect the county's bargaining position and negotiating strategy.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to go in closed session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We are now in closed session. We should be back before midnight. No, just kidding, we'll be, we'll be, hopefully be about 30 minutes. May 10th, 2022, Caroline County Board of Supervisors Meeting, can I get a motion to come out of closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I move Caroline County Board of Supervisors certify that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempt from the open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting to which this certification implies only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered by the board.
I have a motion. Can I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any public, motion carries.
That's the certification. You don't need to come out of closed session first.
We need to do a, a roll vote.
All right, I'm sorry.
I said certify.
Yeah, I was going to ask, I was going to ask for the certification. I was just going to ask for that right now. Mr. Mr. Forehand, do you certify that only the matters on the agenda were discussed in closed meeting?
ISO certified.
Mr. Sealy?
ISO certified.
Mrs. Long?
ISO certified.
Mr. Thomas?
ISO certified.
Mr. Underwood?
ISO certified.
An ISO certified. All right, moving on on the agenda, we are to agenda item number five, which is the CC
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, your next item under unfinished business is SPX 04-2021, Burke Development LLC, Burke Holdings and others. They're requesting a special exception permit for a major solar energy facility. As the board may recall, you did hold a public hearing on, on this item earlier. The action on this item was deferred to tonight's meeting. At that time, there were concerns raised about the stormwater management issues and whether there would be any information forthcoming from DEQ as well as any action come, that might be coming from the General Assembly related to solar developments. The General Assembly did approve several regulatory amendments, however, those do not take effect until July 1st of next year, of this year. DEQ, you have in your packet, did provide a memo as well as a policy guidance related to calculating stormwater impacts from solar energy projects. The, again, that guidance exempts projects that are currently in the permitting process and can achieve interconnection approval from either a regional transmission authority or an electric utility by December 31, 2024, which probably covers all of the projects that are currently pending before the board right now. And as such, unless those projects voluntarily or on their own agree to go back and design to the new stormwater guidance, they are exempt from that by DEQ. I have talked to several board members about this project. I thought it would be appropriate to, for staff to hear any concerns from the board that you would like us to address prior to the next meeting or any future meeting that you might discuss this matter, as well as to provide the board the opportunity to address any questions to the applicant. And with that, I will see if there's any questions for staff that you would like us to take a look at or, or answer for you.
Mr. Forehand?
Not at the moment, no.
Mr. Sealy?
I noticed that we had a regulation that was written by DEQ and sent out on the 29th of March, which talked about stormwater management and- of March, which talked about stormwater management and being, and I don't know if requirement's the right word, but that it be updated, that everything comply. And then there was a subsequent letter after that sent out that sort of, I'm not sure what it did. Can you explain the difference between the two letters?
The initial memo that came out from DEQ appeared to incorporate all solar projects and require those projects to basically design those projects, taking into consideration the, what we refer to as the Chesapeake Bay Water Quality Model and how the solar panels are calculated for impervious area and nutrient loadings for Chesapeake Bay. The follow-up memo actually exempted the projects that were currently in the pipeline with DEQ in the permitting process, with the caveat that those projects had to have their interconnection approved with either a utility company, Dominion, et cetera, or a regional transmission authority. So basically, the projects that we currently are considering now, all of those would appear to qualify for that exemption under the second or the April 14th memo from DEQ.
So none of the projects that we currently have qualify under DEQ or EPA regs that would count those as pervious cover, impervious cover?
Right. They would be exempted from the calculations that were initially proposed by DEQ. That's correct. So they're exempt from that initial memo.
Let me ponder that a minute.
Okay, well, Mr. Underwood?
Yeah, so Mr. Fincham, you're saying that those eight applicants are grandfathered in from the previous DEQ regulation, the new DEQ regulation, then since we have not gone further with any of those applications, why isn't that we can't consider what's before is now with DEQ?
Basically, the applicants, in theory, the board could adopt a condition with the special exception permit that addresses that stormwater deficiency. And in fact, staff has proposed such a condition. I would note for the board that the applicant has taken exception to that condition staff suggested and is concerned about staff's recommendation concerning those stormwater design and calculations to reflect the Chesapeake Bay model. A second issue--
Sir, react.
A second issue with that is that even if we impose that standard or that condition, it's unclear whether DEQ would actually evaluate the, that county condition as part of their stormwater management plan, because they've now gone on record as saying that those projects are exempt from that new guidance. So we could end up in somewhat of a catch 22.
Mr. Fincham has a follow-up to that answer. If we have a condition, we wouldn't delegate that responsibility to investigate or ensure compliance with that condition to DEQ, or would we?
That would be the preferred agency to review that condition? You're right. Technically, it's a county condition. So in theory, we might actually have to retain the services of one of our consulting engineers to review a modified plan for that, for compliance with that additional standard.
That would, they have to go on site as, as DEQ would have to go on site to inspect?
We would--
Or is that--
In theory, yes, we would have to come up with our own inspection program and our own supplemental process to inspect those additional, any additional BMPs that might be required.
Mr. Underwood, I think you were still in the process of asking your questions. Do you have any more?
No, I'm fine for right now. Thank you.
Mrs. Long?
Well, I have a couple, more than a couple of concerns, considering the changes that have come down, which threw us all, I think, into an agreement that it's a good change, but it hits us at a very wrong time. So definitely it is a problem we've got to put in there. And I think we did add a condition to what we've been working on for this one particular project, requesting that anything be built, be built to the, to the new regulations when they come down. But I also have some little things that if we're discussing this particular project that I want to throw out while I've got the opportunity, because we didn't have much of a chance when we were deferring everything before waiting for this news to come down and to see where we were going to be. And that is, I drove out there, or staff drove me out there the other day and I want to thank the property owner for opening some gates for us. And they are timbering, which that land has been for years. But I was really surprised to see that we have 150 foot for the road setback and that if they had timbered 50 feet from the road instead of 150. And I thought, well, this is a good start. So I was concerned to see that because now they're going to have to replant and, you know, they'll have a couple of years' growth, but they had 20 years' growth before they cut it. I think we do definitely need to talk about with all the timbering, of course, there's a lot of disturbance in the soil, loose soil, how that's going to be reestablished and seed it and good topsoil layer established before we even start thinking about doing anything panel-wise on that, because trees are good for the air and good for the soil. But when you start taking them out, as this land has been for many a year, we're going to have to turn it into a solid base if we're going to hold these things, I would think. And then, of course, as everybody knows, I always worry about my little four-legged creatures. So we need to put in there that it has to be wildlife-friendly fencing and also with some ground gap for reptiles and turtles and rabbits and that type of thing, not just the big deer and coyotes that run around. So want to make that, make sure that is a condition. And also, I believe the chief had some requirements as far as spacing goes for emergency access. I also have one thing that I would like to request, and that is there are a few parcels that border this piece of property that have houses on them. And I know our regulations say a 50-foot setback from property lines, but where there are houses, I really would like to make that 100 feet. There are a couple of houses that are set toward the back of their lot. It's, it's not like they're sitting right up toward the road. They're, they're sitting back. And I think with the noise of construction, it would be nice if we could get them, make that a condition, that where there are already existing houses, not on every empty piece of lot, land, but where there are existing houses that we request 100-foot setback. So those are some of the conditions I would like added to this project if we are to continue to discuss and consider how we're going to get ourselves out of this change in regulation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Thomas?
Thank you, Mr. Black. Mr. Fincham, this, this special exception is part of a major solar facility, not, not the minor ones that we talked about before.
Yes, sir.
And, and just so you could explain for those listening or whatever, the difference between major and minor is size of output and number panels, right?
Size of output.
Size of output.
20 megawatts is the, is the breakpoint between a minor and a major. And in the major sub, in the major category, we also create an overlay district based upon proximity to receiving power lines with a one-mile buffer on either side. So it has to be situated within that overlay district in order to qualify for approval under our regulations.
Now, did we have any idea of the number of panels that would be required to produce more than 20 megawatts?
No, we did not do that calculation.
Has the--
We actually looked at the area. The applicant could probably tell you, give you an estimate of the number of panels.
So I guess we can get that from the applicant that's not in behind you, but--
Yes, they can, they can give you that. We just looked at the area of the panels.
Okay. Those were the questions I wanted to know right now. So thank you very much.
Mr. Fincham?
Yes, sir.
And I've got a couple, maybe the applicant would want to address this, and maybe you can address it. As far as we saw in the packet where we had mentioned the new standards with the EPA and the applicant has indicated that basically they're, hey, look, we've got this memo saying there are concerns to your runoff, we've got it mitigated. Can you explain to me kind of, all right, if we had to do, if we had to put like EPA standards in and versus what the applicant is doing? Because I mean, to someone who is, you know, I'm not an engineer like Mr. Sealy is or whatever, but I mean, what is that, what is, how does that, what is the difference?
Okay. The applicant, I think, is, or the applicant's engineer is actually did, did look at what that difference would be, and they might be able to address it specifically. Generally speaking, if you have to take, if, if the panels are considered just what, what the state calls disconnected impervious surfaces, okay? There's a calculation for that. Based upon that calculation, it would increase the, the amount of, of stormwater facilities, say by 20, 30, 50%. Some magic number based upon--
If they're using, if you have to use the EPA standards?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I think they could probably tell you closer, more exact number if you're interested.
Yeah, actually, I would, if you don't mind, I would like to ask the applicant a couple of questions in regards to that.
Can I answer my question too? Just what the number of panels would be in that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Can I--
Hi, good evening. My name is Rob Probst. I'm a project developer with Urban Grid, representing CC Solar. Supervisor Black, thank you so much for that question. I want to start to touch on it and then also call up the, our engineer who's with us tonight from Kimley Horn. But just to step back a moment, I wanted to talk just a little bit about the, the DEQ memo and the concept of, you know, modeling the, designing the project with the notion that the panels are impervious versus, you know, not doing that. The DEQ memo attempts to do something with a very broad brush, broad strokes. And we were actually having this conversation with the planning staff and the environmental, the county environmental planner last week. And it was, we were talking about how different ways we can accomplish and ensure that we're incorporating best management practices to, to, to have good stormwater management, to have good erosion control without necessarily going to an extreme situation of just completely designing the project as if all surfaces are impervious. And there's, there's implications to that beyond just, okay, you're catching your stormwater and you're preventing erosion control. There's other things, unintended consequences to that that are, quite frankly, just unnecessary. And we started to talk about, with the county staff, about some different things that we could do to sort of accomplish the same goals without taking against such a broad stroke. But I'm going to ask Sean Malo from Kimley Horn to come up and talk specifically--
Sure.
--about sort of the types of things that we would be incorporating, that we included in the supplemental information in your package.
Good evening. Sean Malo with Kimley Horn and Associates.
Sean, I just need, like, from you, I just like--
Yeah.
You got to understand, I'm not a math person.
Okay.
So I need it like as, I mean, if you get into calculus and so forth, you're going to lose me. So let's keep it, to answer my question--
Simple.
--as simple as can be.
Yeah. So to go from pervious panels, which is what we designed today, to impervious, it increases in magnitude, just to maybe put it that way. The amount of phosphorus we would have to remove on a project to about five times as much. So all of the BMPs that we would typically put into a solar project have to be at a much higher level of treatment design. So there's many different levels within the BMP guidance that DEQ gives us to clean the water. And we'd either have to preserve a lot more land and things like that. So the ponds are getting bigger, they've got to treat more water and phosphorus, and so you're going to lose a lot of project area. So it makes a pretty significant impact on a project when, when we make that change.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I guess my, my concern, my only concern with, well, not my only concern, but my major concern with some of these projects, and I understand, I understand why they're becoming popular, I get that, is we have seen videos, Mr. Sealy showed us videos, and that's the only, not the only videos, we've seen newspaper clippings. And you hear, like, with these, with the solar companies, I mean, you're green, but you're also about green. You know, I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, we say we're green, but we're also about green. Is the, as a someone who's an avid fisherman myself, the runoff that I've seen from videos in, you know, whether it be Surrey County or Louisa County or Spotsylvania County, where people see that, I mean, that is a, you know, that is a, that is a major, major issue for me. And I was wondering if you could, you could address it, because they're all saying, hey, that was that different project and, you know, that's not us. So how do you, how do you address that?
I would say, I personally have been doing solar here in Virginia for five years. We designed the Spotsylvania Solar Project, and I've seen the videos that you're probably talking about where a neighbor took video of water during a logging activity and it's this milky water, right? In Virginia, we have a lot of clays, a lot of fines. When it rains and there's not a substantial amount of grass on there, you're going to get that milky water. And I think a lot of people see that and they think like just loads of sediment and soil are going into the waterways and the wetlands. And I would say generally, that's not true, because otherwise you would have the Army Corps coming in and fining all these projects in videos that you see for depositing soil into a wetland, which would be in unregulated impact, and they'd have to pay fines and get buckets out there and clean it up. So I would say a lot of projects have been built in the Commonwealth for solar, and no one writes an article about the successful projects that get done.
Sure.
And when you look at, you know, because we've been involved in some of those projects, and as you dive into the details of what occurred, it's rare that it comes down to a design issue in the, in the civil side. Usually, it's a maintenance issue. They weren't cleaning de-watering devices in the ponds. They weren't getting enough stabilization on the site. The different types of soils release like a murky water that leaves the project. There definitely have been clear issues on projects, but I would say for most of the articles you see, it's, it's not an inherent design problem. It's, it's something that goes down to the construction activities themselves.
Okay. Mr. Fincham? And I'll, and I'll come back. This is my last question. What does that mean for, like, as far as from the county perspective is concerned? I know, because we have, like, we were mentioning the WIP 1 and WIP 2 and so forth. How does us, like, if this project were to be approved, how-- How does us like if if this project were to be approved, how what is the difference for us? How does hey, look, we want to go with EPA standards versus not? How how could that affect us as a county?
I think at this point in time, it's an unknown in terms of the the future impact to the county, what we have to do in terms of additional regulations, our proportionate responsibility of of meeting any new TMDLs related to the Chesapeake Bay. What I could do is give you an example of of how we were impacted previously. Previous Chesapeake Bay model calculations, there's there are targets to that that the states have to meet in terms of of reducing nutrient loadings into the bay. Virginia didn't meet it its its targets. So then they were faced with, okay, what are we going to do to 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 help meet the TMDLs that that we didn't meet? Well, Virginia adopted new nutrient limit standards for wastewater treatment plant discharges into the Chesapeake Bay. Caroline County was at the threshold where we needed to expand our wastewater treatment plant. So DEQ tacked on the new limits as part of our permit for our plant expansion, and Caroline County had to spend several million dollars in upgrades to its wastewater treatment plant to meet the new nutrient limits that came about as a result of its the state's failure to meet the TMDLs. I can't tell you exactly what impacts, if any, there will be to to Caroline County, but I can give you an example of of where that program resulted in a direct financial impact to the county as it relates to its wastewater.
So that was it. So in other words, because I know when I was on the Rapid Hana River Basin Commission, they would always talk about the modeling, the modeling and so forth. And I think there's a there's benchmarks that are coming up. And I know like when I left it a couple of years ago, I think the next big benchmark was twenty-five.
That's correct.
Two thousand twenty-five as far as so two thousand twenty-five comes, they say, hey, here's the condition of Chesapeake Bay. You haven't met the standards, Virginia, because I mean, I know there were certain nutrients we're okay with, and I think it was nitrogen or phosphorus, one of the ones that we weren't okay with. And if I remember if I'm remembering correctly. And so twenty twenty-five comes along, Virginia, see, Maryland uses the stick rather than the carrot. Virginia likes to use the carrot as as a way of getting localities to do things. Maryland throws down a law saying you got to do this. I guess my can my concern is, so in twenty twenty-five, if the bay is not where it is, Virginia can turn around, depending on, I would imagine, depending on who's in power, and say, hey, look, here's the stick, you have to increase your so that that could be a major fear we would have to play with, right? As far as, hey, you have to do this because a couple of years ago, it cost us millions. We're not meeting our modeling deadline, the bay is not getting better. And so now Caroline County, you have to do X, Y, and Z, that's going to cost you millions of dollars. Is that not a far-fetched statement or?
No, I I think you're right. I I think what the would happen, the state would look at all the total land area discharging in Chesapeake Bay, they would, you know, identify program improvements or requirements, and potentially the county would have to pay for or implement its proportionate share of that that difference between where we're at and where we need to be. The the concern is that there is a potential obligation to the county, and it may be there anyway, since we are.
Yeah, I got you. I understand. Yeah, I understand that aspect of things. All right, Mr. Thomas, I think I'm going to go back to follow-up questions, and I'll start with you, Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Black. I I just asked before about what would be the number of panels on your major project, and I'm sure you calculated that already.
Actually, we we haven't. It's it's not something that, you know, we we calculate the number of panels per se. I mean, it's something I could give you an estimate of today based on I I don't have one tonight for you. And and the reason it it's a it's a moving target, and and not dramatically, but the panels are rated by their wattage, and panels get get each year, the manufacturers come out of higher and higher wattage panels. So it takes, you know, you might use less panels two years from now when you're building the project than you are today, for example. So that's why the calculations can shift a bit. I don't have a number off the top of my head I can spit out there for you, but I could certainly, you know, get that to you. It's not a not a problem.
All right. Yeah, if you could get that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Happy to do so.
I'll just leave it.
Supervisor Black, could I could I just address something related to sort of what today, how counties find themselves needing to meet Chesapeake Bay watershed quality standards under the MS four program and how kind of how it works?
Yeah, but we're not we're not MS four. We're not, we don't have a population of over a hundred thousand. So the MS four, the MS fours really would never, I mean, if you were up in Spotsylvania, if you're in Stafford.
Right.
And we have no, I mean, once our population hits a hundred hits a hundred thousand, I mean, there's a threat that we could be in MS four, but I'm not even sure Spotsylvania isn't MS four yet.
That's the only point I wanted to make is that you're you're not even brought into, you know, needing to meet the TMD standard, TMDL standards today.
Roger Bowers for CC Solar, if I could just add something. It it's not like the changes to the EPA model that have been done that 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 were reflected in the DEQ memo have even been promulgated in terms of exactly how those would be applied and exactly what those applications would be. So we're talking about a future regulatory change. We're talking about a suggested change or a change that was adopted at the advisory board level to the EPA as a possible solution to deal with what Mike says, these reduction in standards or failure to meet standards at the Virginia level. And as we saw when the last time came around in two thousand fifteen, there were a lot of suggested changes on how things might be done. And then there was an awful lot of work with the agency at EPA level and a DEQ level to come up with realistic ways to apply those. And so what we're talking about is because of one impervious to pervious as to solar panels suggestion or change in the model that has not been applied, has not been played out in regulations, we don't know exactly how it's going to play out, and we won't until twenty twenty-five or after then. So it's it's awfully hard. Our engineers have worked for a couple of months to figure out what the potential, you know, changes might mean, but we don't have any real guidance on what those are.
And and I think, sir, to be honest with you, I I think with that argument, though, and I'm just playing devil's advocate, that's the concern. That's the that's the concern. That's the concern on our end.
Right.
Because we don't know, and and I with stuff in the EPA, the EPA is, I mean, maybe under previous administration, but I don't know too often that too many too many times the EPA gets less stringent. The EPA usually gets more stringent, especially if the bay, especially if the if the bay is not performing well in twenty twenty-five, you know, and we can read articles going back and forth on that, we can debate that all day, but I I for us, you got to understand our point, we have to be, we're the ones who have to be extra cautious with that.
We we agree upon the point, and I'm not saying it to suggest, I mean, EPA regulations change under administration, the way DEQ implements those regulation changes. And the last time, there was an awful lot of debate, and DEQ did come up with a much more reasonable way of implementing them for for whatever the reason. What I'm saying is that we won't know how those standards might be. And so for us to commit to design to something which is an unknown is it is is not something we can do because we we don't know what we're committing to. It's a constantly changing market. What we have done, what we have done is is we're in a land use setting, and these changes, as Rob was saying, you know, we're not MS four, we're never going to be MS four. So it could be that these changes never apply. But in Mike's example, if those changes did apply to that that they could get to the wastewater from municipal plants, the county would be left with an obligation from those change regulations that would have no nexus with this case, which is why we have offered to provide some additional resources through the siding agreement process, which is not a land use matter because land use is not even if you were to give, Mike started to go into, if you were to put a condition on, he's trying to in number fourteen, then potentially you'd be a situation where you'd be asking us to comply with unknown regulations, and and DEQ would not administer that because they've already given guidance that these projects are under the existing standards. And the county would be left in a position, the best, the worst of all worlds, in that they'd have to find their own way to implement something that was an unknown because the guidance isn't going to come down in time that this project would be built. And and lastly, in terms of the compliance, the discussions with staff, the stormwater quantity, the 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 amount of volume coming off the property is, by all people, reasonable people, adequately addressed in the designs. That's kind of what the engineer was talking to you about, in that most solar projects in Virginia don't have the poster child articles, and even the poster child articles are about specific events that may look a lot worse than what actually happened.
How's it adequately designed, and you don't know how many panels you got?
Because you know you're going to have a certain amount of area within your, we have approximately seven or eight hundred acres of disturbed area amongst an eighteen hundred parcel. You look at that total disturbed area and the water that comes off that area and how you control it. It has nothing to do with the exact cloud. You don't ask about the number of shingles on a roof for when you're building a house, you ask about the square footage of the house as a whole, and that's our footprint as a whole.
Well, you ask about the number of shingles because you're being charged by the number of shingles, so.
You would if you were being charged by the shingles.
To follow up, let me let me ask this question because we're building a fire station in Carmel Church. Mr. Thomas announced it earlier. We know what that impervious cover is, correct? We know what that roof's going to look like, what that parking lot's going to look like, and how much water that's going to shed.
Yep.
You know how much impervious cover you have with those panels parallel to the ground on the whole surface. Those do not absorb water, correct? We all agree that don't absorb water, right? Water sheds from those panels. Do we agree on that?
Yeah.
There's there's a difference.
Now, now, do we agree on that the those panels shed water? When they're parallel to the ground, do they shed water?
I I am I am not trying to debate you on those questions. The point is not the amount of volume of water that comes off.
No, 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 impervious or pervious cover. It's impervious cover, correct? If that panel's parallel to the ground, it's impervious, correct? It doesn't absorb water.
That's right. The the panel's not absorbing water, the water will be absorbed as soon as it hits the ground.
No, no, that water has to then be shed from that panel, correct?
That's right, and into the grass.
No, no, it's got to be shed in that panel, and there's a sheeting agreement, there's a sheeting equation that goes with that.
On the project as a whole, the water, what you measure in volume is what leaves the edge of the property.
No, 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 back up. No, no, back up. Every roof sheds water, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so these panels are like roofs, correct? They shed water.
That absolutely.
Okay, so there's a sheeting, there's a sheeting.
That doesn't necessarily lead to an increase. That doesn't necessarily lead to an increase in volume to the stormwater facilities. What you're talking about in this regulatory change of the EPA model is water quality.
No, 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 you're you're beyond where I'm at. You 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 won't do this step by step with me. That water gets shed from that panel in a sheet, correct?
It does.
There's a sheeting equation that tells you how much water inch per hour, two inch per hour, what that water sheds from that panel and hits the ground.
Yeah, this is something you you said you didn't want to get into.
He said that was Mr. Black, not Mr. Sealy.
I asked our engineer to see whether that is what he agrees with that statement.
I mean, the reality is the same amount of water is falling, but it's going to be.
That is the exact reality.
No, no, no.
But I wait, wait. Gentlemen, gentlemen, let's. It may hit the panels and then hit the ground, but it's the same amount of water that comes off the facility as a whole.
He jumped in before I finished. The same amount of water is going to fall regardless, right? But when the panels are not when they're horizontal to the ground.
Parallel to the ground.
I mean, parallel to the ground, they they shed, and that is like a roof with no gutter. I've experienced that myself personally because the gutter broke. At the ground, there is a ditch because the water's coming off at a focus level. That's all the point I think he's trying to make, and I tried to explain it so everybody could understand.
Right.
Just maybe just one point of clarification.
Yeah, I would differentiate a panel floating above a grass field and a roof on a house with a foundation that the water is it's impossible for the water to go under the roof where in a solar project, there is water flowing under all of the panels.
Only after it comes off the panel, which is at some degree of tilt, parallel to the ground. Your solar panels aren't set like this, correct? They're set like this.
Yeah, they rotate.
So that water's got to shed as in as in a roof because it is a roof over the ground. If you take this table and you we tip it some some degree and we run water off, when it runs off the end, it is going to it's going to come off of this table with a force that hits the ground.
More force than the normal water.
More force than just rain hitting the ground in individual drops. There is a sheeting equation that goes with that that gives you the the volume times the force times the distance it's got to fall, which creates a force on the ground. Have you done that? Have you done that, those equations for a whole row of panels and what that looks like?
No, we haven't. That's not an industry standard of what, I mean, we we do solar projects across the country, and that's not an equation that's running. And I think another big difference between a roof and a solar panel is the panels are, you know, at your average standing height, four to five feet above the ground, where a roof is ten or twelve.
I've got a dog shed at home that where the water is being shed from it has created a four-inch deep ditch. And and that's only three feet from the ground. It's four feet wide, and it's three feet from the ground, and it's eight feet long, and so is the ditch that it's created from the water running off of it. So the height, it's force times distance.
Yeah.
It's a simple, it's a simple physics equation. I know, as you're an engineer, you can do that.
Yeah, sure.
For various volumes of rain, whether it's half inch, one inch, two inches, there's there's a force that goes with that with that sheeting equation that exerts a force on the ground.
Sir, yeah, okay. Can I can I, Mr. Long, did you have a follow-up question? And we'll get back to you, Mr. Sealy. Well, I'll ask that. I'll I'll ask that, yes. Mr. Long, did you have any follow-up questions?
Yes, I I did have, I got involved in Mr. Sealy's discussion and and slipped my mind, but one of the questions are statements I wanted to have. We're making the statements that these new regulations are future regulations, but this project's going to be there for thirty-five or forty years. That's the future. That's our job is to plan for the future and protect. And we have seen, just as you said, you've seen videos from a project you worked on, but I believe someone said it's not in the design, it's in the maintenance afterward that you see these problems are with the the developer or the contractor. I believe your term was contractor. Well, I'm sorry, that's still a problem for us. So why has the industry not taken up this issue of, okay, I've got this wonderful thing designed, so here, hire a contractor, and they do a crappy job like in Louisa, which I have seen, and then they don't go back and fix it? They don't do anything to help the people who they have have damaged, and I'm sure you all are well aware of the bad publicity Louisa has caused your industry. So what has changed with with your company or with the industry as a whole that that type of thing doesn't happen anymore? Because there are good builders and there are bad builders.
Agreed. Great, great points, Supervisor Long. If if I could address that, a few a few different things come to mind. One, it's it's actually a great opportunity, gives me a great opportunity to mention that in January, our company was acquired by Brookfield Renewables. You may have seen that press release, it was at the end of January. What this means for the county is that the company standing before you today will be the same company that will be that will own and operate the CC Solar project. So you've got that kind of continuity. We're not going to sell this project off and go on to the next one. So we have reputational risk, but we're also here as a long-term neighbor. So that's point number one. Point number two is I, too, visited a project that went awry in the Commonwealth. It was down in Campbell County, and it made the newspapers. I met with the environmental planner of that project. We spent over two hours with each other. I went and visited the site. What I heard him say is that we didn't have a good solar ordinance, and we didn't have, we had very few permit conditions to give us. we had very few permit conditions to give us any teeth to go after them to make sure that during construction, they were doing what they should have been doing post-construction, et cetera. It was also a terrible site for a solar project. There was a tremendous amount of grading that occurred on that site. The CC Solar site is, is very different. It, it, the water flows into itself, into natural wetland and, and stream areas. And there's a lot of natural buffer and vegetation with, with all the mature trees on that site. And you're, the planning staff has put forth twenty-five different conditions. You have very robust ordinance, very different from Camp, what Campbell County was working with. Eight of the conditions alone of those twenty-five deal directly with managing stormwater and erosion control. And condition number nine gives the planning director very broad discretion to require more stringent stormwater management standards if, if he or she feels those are necessary. So it's, it's, it's a very different environment, I think, for, for this project and for this county.
So could you answer my second part? In Luisa, and I'm just picking on that because that's the one I've seen, so they had issues. They didn't have a county backing them up or a planning department acting, backing them up. Why would not the company, who shall stay nameless at this time, was not you, why did they not step up and correct the problem? Why is there still erosion on other people's properties and, and, you know, lack of construction?
Not a project that we're associated with, so I don't know the intimate details of it.
This is a reflection of you, but.
Yeah, I, I don't know the answer. Yeah, I, I don't know. I, I, what I do know about that project is that they, they had certainly a lot of extensive, steep slopes on that project. The, the landscape of that project was such that it drained away from the site. And again, I'm not saying that these are necessarily excuses. They were just sort of inherent topography issues that were a challenge for that particular project that probably exacerbated those issues. But, but why the company is not correcting them, the county's not forcing them to, or maybe they don't have the tools to force them to. Again, you know, you look at these standards that the planning staff has suggested, they have the tools to make sure that stormwater and erosion control are done properly during construction and post-construction monitoring and corrective action. I mean, it's, they have the toolbox.
And you would not, this would not be a project that you would sell, but you would continue to.
Own and operate.
Own and operate it. And since you said you want to continue to, to do good work, then why is there an issue with agreeing to maintain the DEQ standards as they come down?
Yeah, as I said, I mean, the DEQ standards, one, as, as our, as Roger pointed out, you know, it's, there's some guidelines, but they're not the final standards per se, and we don't know exactly when they'll come out, but it'll certainly be many months. We're already a very late-stage project. And as I said earlier, you know, I, the, the, this standard, just to say, well, oh, just, just design it as, as such that, you know, all surfaces are disconnected and pervious. Again, that's, that's taking such a broad brush. It's a, it's a heavy hammer for something that deserves a much more refined touch. To, to build something way beyond, overbuild it essentially is an excessive cost, quite frankly. It could very well make the project uncompetitive. We operate in a very large electrical market, as you know, called PJM, where there's plenty of buyers, there's also plenty of sellers of renewable energy, whether it's from wind or solar. We have to compete in that market. We, we, you know, we have to have an aggressive price. And if we over-design, overbuild a project to do something vastly more than what is needed, that, that's a cost that, you know, may not look competitive in the marketplace when we're trying to sell the, sell the energy and the project. But I, but I'm confident that we can, based on the meeting that we had last week with, with the planning staff and the environmental planner, I'm, I'm confident that we can come up with very specific stormwater management, erosion control features to this project as we get into that late stage, and we're at those late-stage designs through that site, you know, the site plan approval process. And that's where the true detailed engineering and, you know, comes into play when, when we get to, to that step in the, in the development process.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Just two quick questions, and then we'll let Mr. Sealy show a video, and then we'll, we'll discuss as a board. I'll, I'll ask Mr. Underwood and Mr. Forehand if they have any follow-up questions, and then we'll see where we go from here. But my question to you, and, and going with like Mr. Sealy's example is, like, at, at my house, my deck is probably five, maybe six feet off the ground. And when it rains, of course, it's, the, the panels aren't, I mean, it's just flat boards. And then, under my deck, I have clear places where there's divots when it rains. And, and, and the rain coming down, if you're under the deck, it's just like drip, drip, drip. And, but you have clear, and the grass won't grow there because of the fact it's not in the sun. But my question to you is, do you put, like, the suggestion to me was, hey, how do I deal with this? Because it's definitely really divoted. And the suggestion was to me is to put like a, some sort of rock, crush rock down or something to, to mitigate that. Do you guys do anything like, as far as that's concerned, under these panels to, to mitigate the runoff? Because I know a lot of times people like riprap and different things in places, or anything like that, or you're just relying on grass?
I'm not an engineer, so I'm going to give you my layman's response to those questions, and then I'm going to ask Sean to come back up here. No, we typically don't put rock underneath the panels we've found, and again, Sean can testify to this. And those pictures that we included in that supplemental information, I think, do a good job of illustrating the point that unlike your deck, these panels do rotate, so the water is not always hitting the grass in the same space. Unlike your deck where grass is not growing underneath, we have dense meadow grass underneath. And so, the erosion, it, it, it's, it's not an issue. Sean can speak more extensively about his experience and seeing projects that have been completed. And with, with the grass underneath, it's, it's just not an issue.
All right. My secondary question, I think Mr. Thomas had asked it quietly, is when, and you have a heavy rain event. We have a thunderstorm coming in, and the panel, is there a way for you to, is, is there a way that, do you guys ever react to that? Where, hey, look, we're going to have a lot of runoff, and we tilt the panel like, like ninety degrees? So, basically, you shouldn't have as much sheeting as you would if it was tilted like this or into the rain a little bit. Do you guys ever do anything like that?
That's a good question. I, I'm actually going to ask Sean if he's heard of anything like that. I'm, I, I don't know the answer to the question.
I, I don't think with the way that the trackers are controlled, you know, if we're anticipating a certain amount of inches of rain, the system reacts. Most of the time when you have a lot of heavy rains though, you will have high winds. And there are some, you know, there's a couple of weather stations throughout projects constantly monitoring where the sun is and what temperature it is and what, where the wind direction and stuff is. So there are reactions to that. So if there are high winds, there are sort of some protective measures typically during a rainstorm, where the outer rows will flare up to maximum tilt, so that winds coming into the project will be diverted around all the other trackers. And all the other trackers in the site go horizontal to remove the cross-sectional area. So if the winds do get under the panels or go over, that the system is designed to sort of mitigate as best we can. So if there is a lot of rain, and it's really windy as well, sort of the drip edge and all that doesn't really matter because the rain's getting blown all over the place, so.
Thank, yeah, thank you. I was just, I was just kind of curious about, Mr. Sealy.
David, can you start the PowerPoint that I gave you?
Can we just, can we do this in like a minute? Just to show, you want to show the video, right?
I, I want to show, I want to show a couple of still pictures and then one of the videos. Now, this is a Luisa site that's sixteen hundred acres as well. It's up and running a solar, and this has been a non-stop problem for over a year. And this is runoff from the site. They also have a drain pipe that's about thirty inches diameter that when an inch of rain, that pipe is solid water coming out of there, blowing across three pieces of property to a creek.
Well, again, I mean, I just reiterate, you know, I, I don't, I can't speak to what Luisa County's corrective action toolbox looks like, but I can tell you that.
But you said, what was the site you said you had a problem at that you were on before?
Campbell County.
So there's Campbell County, there's, there's Surrey County, there's Essex County. I mean, every county that's got a big site seems to have their fair share of problems at some point in time.
Um, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that that's the case. But again, my, the point I was making is your, your planning staff has the tools to require more stringent stormwater management features during construction, post-construction monitoring, monitoring during construction. If there's a heavy rain event, a one inch or more of rain in a twenty-four hour period, we're actually required to fly drones to, to, to look at where there's excessive runoff around the site and make corrective action. I mean, it.
Where is that written? Where is that written at?
What condition is that, Mike? Do you know?
But you don't like condition fourteen that would alleviate some of this. Because now you're talking about labor-intensive stuff. If we get excess of an inch of rain, we've got to fly a drone over the property.
We do. We do. We do.
No, yeah, you do, and but the mitigation becomes something that we've got to force you all to do. We've got to come out, we've got to send an inspector. And I see Roger shaking his head, no, but when it doesn't get, you guys are standing here today, your company was sold a couple of months ago. Actually, it was right after your public hearing here, the next day it was sold. Am I correct?
Um, our company was acquired at the end of, end of January.
So, so right after our public hearing, I think it was the next day, I got an email that you guys were sold. Roger shaking his head, yes.
Yeah, it was around that time, yeah.
Okay, so, this project moves forward, the day it starts, you sell it again.
That's not what I'm saying here. I said, but, but sir, I, I said that we, we are, we are going to be owning and operating this project. I, I think, we can always find examples of projects, whether it's a solar project, a retail, a large retail, a mall, or whatever. I mean, all kinds of projects have construction-related issues, but I think it's unfair to say that all projects, just because some projects had issues, all of them are going to have issues. And what I'm saying is that we're committed to, you know, working closely with the county to make sure that we're not a poster child. And I think your county has the, 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 the hammers to make sure that we, your county does not end up in that situation. I, I'm not sure what more I could say about it, you know, than that.
Mr., I'm going to move on. Mr. Underwood, do you have any follow-up questions?
I, I do, thanks. I was waiting very patiently. I guess my question is, in terms of the new regulations that are coming down the pike, if you've, is your objection to those and trying to meet those new regulations, is it cost? That you're, you're saying that would, would be the reason you would not want to meet those conditions? Is it only cost or are there some other reasons?
It's, I would say three things. It's, it's the cost, but it's also, it, it uses up, you know, it'll use up a lot more land for the project. And, and probably most importantly, it's uncertain what exactly we're going to have to do specifically. As we said, the DEQ memo basically said, here's some rough guidance, here's the concept, we're going to put some meat on the bones. Look out for the next set of regulations. Who knows when that's coming? Once from now, for sure.
And I don't mean to cut you off, but as Ms. Long stated, then is, don't you feel that's a reason for us to add additional precautions? Because obviously, DEQ sees an issue that they believe that they need to, to tag on to the regulations that they have now to ensure that we don't run into issues later. Don't you believe that's the reason for us to be extra precautionary here?
So there's, so there's two things. The, the DEQ memos are trying to get at, and correct me if I'm wrong, Sean. It's trying to really get at water quality issues, right?
No, Mr. Sealy.
And quantity, okay, and, and quantities, and quantity. On, when, when we were meeting with the county last week, the environmental planner, David, Nunley, thank you. One of the statements that he made during the meeting was, he said, you know what? I'm not as concerned about the, how projects are currently designed and meeting, and meeting, you know, post-construction water quality, quality measures. He says, I, I, I would like to focus more on the, the, the water quality, excuse me, quantity during construction. And we were starting to brainstorm some ideas with our engineer in the room about how we might do that. And we kind of agreed that, you know, during the site plan process, when we have a further along engineered project, that would be the appropriate time to get into the, the nitty-gritty of, of the design. In, in terms of the county's concern about being exposed to future requirements to meet standards that come down from the DEQ and impose a cost, as Roger said earlier, you know, one of the things we've offered up through a, a separate agreement with, through the siting agreement process would be to offer some, we've offered, we put forth some additional funding that could help the county with those costs if, if that all comes about. If they don't, the funds stay with the county. But if, if that became a reality where the county was subject to enhanced regulations and it would impose a cost, you would have those funds to, to mitigate that expense.
Based, based on the direction that the regulations are heading, how much additional cost would that add to a project? The project that you, you're contemplating now?
Um, we're, we're really at the front end of understanding the full implication of, of what that would mean. I don't know if Sean has done it for some other projects more thoroughly at this point yet. He could speak in broad strokes to that or not? No. No, I mean, it's, 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 so, it's very early. I mean, I think what we're hearing from Kim Lee Horn and, and others is that they know that, as he said earlier, you know, the size of these stormwater management basins would have to grow substantially. The number of them would have to grow substantially. So, you know, you're moving a lot more earth around and and, and engineering a lot more ponds. I mean, so this is, and, and we're, and, and, and losing panels in areas where we were hoped to put panels. Now we'll have, you know, stormwater management basin. So, the project shrinks from an electrical standpoint, energy standpoint, and then we have this added cost of increased stormwater management. Of guidance, right. And, and, um, and two, as I said, I, I'm confident that we can develop, uh, stormwater management and erosion control features to this project, um, in concert with your planning staff, that, that, you know, incorporate all the best management practices and, and will, will not, uh, create problems in your county.
Yeah, I heard you, I heard you say, I heard you mention that. So certainly, um, I appreciate you being here and I appreciate your responses. Thank you. I have no more, Jeff.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, um, hold on, I just want to ask Mr. Forehand. Mr. Forehand, do you have any follow-up questions or?
Actually, of all of them, this is my, this is my favorite project. And the, the change in the regulation is a quantity issue?
It, it's both. Qual, quality of, and quantity, yes.
I mean, looking at the, uh, at the topography of the, of the, the map that we have in our packet, um, I mean, it's, it is convenient that there are so many little tributaries that, that intersect the site.
Yeah, and it, it just, it drains in on itself, which helps to, uh, again, prevent that off-site, you know, water running off the site, you know, unlike some other sites that drained off themselves.
And these are existing, they're already there.
That's right. And, and the wet, and the wetlands as well.
But what I don't see, I, I don't see basins in this map. Is that, is it not a traditional basin?
Those haven't been incorporated yet. That's, it's, uh, we wouldn't incorporate it at this stage of the process.
All right.
Yeah. It's typical. It would become a site plan approval, we would show, uh, the exact location of the panels and the stormwater management basins, et cetera, yeah.
But it's so, it's so cut up. With the, with the topography.
Yeah, it, it is, but that also allows for, um, you know, spacing between all these different pods, if you will, to allow the wildlife to migrate through that area. So it's not one, you know, perfect rectangle with a fence all the way around the whole thing, which would make it difficult for wildlife to traverse the area and to utilize that area.
Okay. A, as you know, we're, we're very cautious.
As you should be.
And, and fearful, all at the same time. It's a, it's a, I guess the fear of the unknown, what, what could come down and, and what problems we could have, that, you know, is there, are our conditions strong enough to remedy whatever problem that could arise? And with that doubt always creeps in because we see the issues at other jurisdictions that are just like us, that were designed using the same calculations and formulas, I guess, I assume that, that this one was designed to. That, you know, it's, it's, it creates a deep fear. Uh, I mean, I, I worked for a company that built these, but I didn't have the benefit of going back five years later to see that, you know, is there a ditch at the bottom of the, of the, of the, you know, is there, you know, how, how the different topographies change the water flow, the speed, that, that kind of stuff. So that, that's, so my experience with this is, is kind of limited. And honestly, when it, when it started, the issue started to rise and when we started doing my research, when our, our ordinance came, was being developed, uh, the last few years, that, that, I thought a lot of it was, was overkill, until we started seeing the, the things that we're seeing now, that, again, that's, that strike in fear pretty deeply. Um, so, like I said, this is, uh, the location, the number of people it impacts, the fact that most of it was timberland and not farmland, that, that's, those are all good things in my, in my, in my book. Um, I just have, you know, I, I, I'm having a hard time getting past the fear of, um, so, just to be frank.
That, that's fair. I, you know, again, I, I would just maybe ask you guys to reflect upon, you know, the, the full set of the conditions. I, I think there's some of, certainly some of the most robust set that we've, we've seen in the Commonwealth. Clearly, the staff has spent, spent a considerable amount of time and effort, um, thinking about these. And, um, as I said, I think they're not only protective during construction, but post-construction and, uh, provide you with the ability to, uh, require us, if, if we're, we're not doing what we need to be doing to your satisfaction, you, you have that, uh, that hammer to, to come after us.
Thank, thank you. How would the board like to proceed?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to motion that we defer this. I think we have one more defer. Uh, I believe you have a meeting this week with DEQ and planning staff. I think we can, can extend until our next board meeting and give, uh, planning staff and us time to go through new information and get a report back from that and see where we go. Want to be fair to everybody, but as I said, it is our job to play up for the future in all ways, energy, environmental, and we're not specialists, so we're going to be very cautious about what decision we make.
Understood.
But that, I think, would just give us more time to gather information and for you to be at the meeting with, uh, with planning staff and DEQ.
So, we got a motion to defer. Is there a second?
Second.
Is, is this, is staff, does that give you, just out of curiosity, the motion is for the next meeting, does that give you guys enough time to, to work with them or is the next meeting, uh, fair or, because that's two weeks away, I believe.
Um, we are supposed to have a, um, meeting with DEQ staff early next week.
Okay.
Um, Monday. Whether all our questions will be answered, I, I can't speak to that. Um, but certainly, I think it's appropriate to defer to the twenty-fourth and we'll see from there.
Would it be better to defer till June? Oh, we can't, we can't?
Uh, the, the applicant would have to agree to that, to, to a deferral to the June meeting.
Well, I'll leave that all to you all.
Yes, Mr. Prokes indicated that would be fine.
Okay, so do we want to, if that's the case, then do we want to amend that motion?
Yes, I'll amend my motion to the first meeting in June.
Okay, so we have a motion to defer to the first meeting in June. Do you amend your second?
I'll amend my second.
So we have a motion and a second to defer to the first meeting in June. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, motion carries. All right, moving on, um, thank you. Um, moving on to, I guess, our next, we've done, uh, number seven, we're going to go to number six, additional discussion of the personal property taxes for year two thousand twenty-two. I guess, who will be, is there anyone from staff taking this up?
I thought you'd had enough fun. Mr. Chairman, yes, sir.
No, we're good, we're good. I was just, uh, I was just telling, Mr. Parton said we were going to get out of here at ten o'clock and he's not going to meet that goal, so I'm just giving him a hard time.
He has only been to the podium once, so. I can take it somewhere up here. So, we, we've written a memo and.
Right, okay.
Do you have any questions with that memo?
Does anyone, does anyone have any, I'm sorry, I thought you were going to give a little, a background to it, that's why I was wondering, or?
Oh, background, well, uh, we prepared the budget, but if you remember, we came with the budget presentation, we had told you that values were up, the commissioner was clear on that early on, that the values were up, and that's why we recommended at the time to, uh, eliminate the VL fee, that works out to about twenty-three cent tax reduction on the rate. Um, and then we came forward and, and recommended you drop from three eighty to the three fifty, which is another thirty cents. So we were down off of our overall, what people are charged, fifty-three cents.
How much is that in dollars?
Forty-seven thousand dollars.
Now, how much total with the, the two independently, what is the VL fee and what is?
The VL fee was over a million. And then forty-seven thousand times forty-seven thousand and change times thirty, anybody got a calculator real quick? Yeah, another million something.
So we're.
So we, we had already planned to, that's why we made those reductions. So you are seeing some counties now that are reducing, that didn't reduce at all going in. And we made that reduction on the front side. But the other money that we have in the budget, we knew was an increase because we, as you've heard the school say, we have about four million in, in increases in the budget.
But now, there's one point two million and change in reductions. And how much is the projected increase since, since vehicles have gone up more?
About one point eight, I think. Is that right? I'm quoting from. Two point one.
So two point one is the projected revenue?
Correct.
And, and one point two was the projected loss?
Two point one, two point three is the loss.
Yeah, because we, because we took away VL fee, which was thirty dollars. Two point five total we already reduced out of the, out of personal property and the VL fee. Because everybody was paying thirty dollars, even if you had a car that wasn't worth but a thousand, and we're paying hardly any tax. And that equates to twenty-three cent.
I've got a, I've got a question for you. Um, as far as taxes are concerned, uh, and, and maybe the other board members have different, if there's one tax that we get complained about all the time, it's this one, the personal property tax.
Correct.
It, it is the one that people hate. And, and yes, we set the rate, so we are, at the last meeting, we set the rate absolutely, um, at, at, at the three fifty. So we are, uh, we are responsible. The one thing I don't understand, and maybe I'm going to, this is going to be a question for Mr. Bassoon, is, is when my house is assessed, okay, by the county, all right, and we hire someone, right, so the, the county says my house is worth this, right? I can sell my house for that value, plus more, probably. Okay? Um, the, the, ever since I've been on the board, one of the things that people have said, and it hasn't just been this year, it's been for the last ten years, can I sell my car for that? Give me a break. There's no way I can sell my car for that.
Yeah, Mr. Bassoon, because I think, I think, I've had some conversations with him and he's done some research along with his office on, because I've heard this and, and I've talked to several folks that have bought cars and spent, for a two thousand and six Chevy twenty-five hundred diesel with two hundred thousand miles, bought it for seventeen eight, the guy wanted twenty thousand for it. I mean, that vehicle, brand new, only cost thirty thousand. So, Mr. Bassoon, can you shed some light on just values and where they've gone and where, because I think we need to do some research on this in general.
Good evening, board. So, I can, I can tell you here and now, after the books were posted, we released our DMV downloads that were frozen. When those downloads came in, I'm holding here ten DMV, I can't go into details because these are people-specific things. However, the vehicle in itself, when they go to DMV and they put their purchase price in, these ten, random ranging from nine thousand dollars to sixty-one thousand dollars, they're all paying more on their DMV listed price. Then when we dump it into our assessment system, the JD Power NADA Clean Trade, it's lower. So they're still paying more than this. I mean, this is as of, um, five two twenty, twenty-two. So, the NADA values are based off of this current sales, and I, and I can, and I'm going to go on record and say this, these numbers are going to go up again next year. They're already on the rise. This is, this is not a, something we can control. This is the, the sales, the market, the used car market, these are, all these assessments are based off of current sales.
This is a bubble.
Hopefully, it'll pop soon.
That's exactly what it is. I mean, there's.
It is.
It's supply and demand. High school economics, there's, there's fewer cars out there, there's more dollars chasing these cars, so they're going up. The reality is, for me, we reduced the tax maybe ten percent, and the vehicle prices have gone up thirty percent. So for me, I think there's some way we should be able to give some relief, and that's all I'm trying to do.
That, that's completely fine. If someone lines that up, queues it up, and tells me legally how to do it, that's out of my hands. I'll be glad to do whatever the county decides to do on that part. I, I, I don't have any say in refunding or anything.
Can I say that this really speaks to, then, the greater problem that we're, we're all going to have to sit down and discuss, um, at length after this? Because if you're paying more value for a vehicle than you are for your house in terms of taxes, there's really something wrong with how the system is, is made, how it's put together, how it's calculated. So while we're fixing this, I think we're going to have to come back as a board and fix this issue first. And I agree with Mr. Thomas that we need to give people relief now, as they have done in some other counties, and then come back and have a real discussion about what the rate for an automobile, personal property should be versus what a home should be. And I think people could understand your home being of value, but I know my truck is a two thousand and fourteen, went up as seven thousand dollars more than what I paid for it, uh, six years ago, which is just crazy. So, you know, there, there is a, a big problem and we're going to have to resolve it. And I think we can by looking at the rate, going back and doing some equalization, giving people an opportunity to pay those, those taxes without penalty, uh, in some kind of installment or later, until we can get this resolved.
And if I miss my, Mr. Bassoon, this is, and I, and I get, like, I mean, the people say, hey, it's, it's, uh, it, it, you know, like, there's no question we're in a bubble. And, and I, and I don't disagree with that at all. My, my problem has always been that, um, even before the bubble, even when I came on the board, when I would get calls on taxes, because I, I, you know, I teach with several, uh, Caroline County residents at the school, and people have always said, you know, this is two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, so we, we weren't in a bubble then. You can sell my car, you, you want it, I'll, I'll sell my car for this, what you're, what Caroline is assessing at. And that has always been, and that has always been an issue with citizens calling me as far as what the cars are valued at. Um, and, yes, we set the rate, but I, when we set the rate on houses, I feel like we set a rate on, uh, a, a close to as realistic rate as possible. I'm not sure that our rate that we're, I mean, the, the value that we're, that we're doing right now is, is realistic. And, and it may be because of the bubble, yes, but overall, for a long time, I don't know, I, I saw your clean trade and different, I don't know if there's a way that we can go down in that to make it more realistic, and then we can adjust the rate based on that. But for me, even if, even if we were to go down on the rate, in which, you know, we'll, we'll discuss that, but even if we go down on the rate, someone's going to still complain to me and say, hey, look, even if our rate was two dollars, you know, when they see that their truck is assessed at, and not in a bubble, they're going to be like, how can you say that my truck is worth that much? And now it is. I understand, now it is. I, I get, I get what you're saying. In the last couple of years, we have been, but historically, I just feel like we have been assessing vehicles at a, at a much higher rate than someone could actually sell it for. And where, whereas in, in houses, I, I don't feel like we, we've been there, because we're, we're using professional data. So I think that's something that we need to look at. And I'm not, I'm not putting the blame on anyone, I'm not, that's not what I'm trying to do. I'm just saying, I just, it has been a recurring conversation that, that we have had, um, from, I've had for constituents for numerous years.
Yeah. Well, the one thing I can say, every commissioner's office in the state uses. And that has always been, and that has always been an issue with citizens calling me as far as what the cars are valued at. And yes, we set the rate, but I, when we set the rate on houses, I feel like we set a rate on a, a close to as realistic rate as possible. I'm not sure that our rate that we're, I mean, the, the value that we're, that we're doing right now is, is realistic. And, and it may be because of the bubble, yes, but overall, for a long time, I don't know, I, I saw your clean trade and different, I don't know if there's a way that we can go down in that to make it more realistic, and then we can adjust the rate based on that. But for me, even if, even if we were to go down on the rate, in which, you know, we'll, we'll discuss that, but even if we go down on the rate, someone's gonna still complain to me and say, hey, look, even if our rate was two dollars. You know, when they see that their truck is assessed at, and not in a bubble, they're gonna be like, how can you say that my truck is worth that much? And now it is, I understand, now it is. I, I get, I get what you're saying. In the last couple of years, we have been, but historically, I just feel like we have been assessing vehicles at a, at a much higher rate than someone could actually sell it for. And whereas in, in houses, I, I don't feel like we, we've been there, because we're, we're using professional data. So I think that's something that we need to look at. And I'm not, I'm not putting the blame on anyone, I'm not, that's not what I'm trying to do. I'm just saying, I just, it has been a recurring conversation that, that we have had from, I've had for constituents for numerous years.
Well, the one thing I can say, every commissioner's office in the state uses the J D Power N A D A East Coast version. And whether this car that was purchased for nine thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars, being assessed at five thousand eight twenty-five, every county is gonna have the same number if they're using Clean Trade. The rates, you know.
Is every county using Clean Trade, though?
I, I don't know what they're using. I know by state law, I'm to use the best assessment method possible, and Clean Trade is where it's at at a hundred percent value. People that are assessing less than a hundred percent technically, it's illegal, so.
So why were they, let me ask you a question.
That's between them and their attorneys and their, and their counties. That has nothing to do with us. The state code says that I'm to assess at the fair market value, used by a mass assessing tool. I'm not pulling these numbers out of the air. Rates are made to, the, the law was made for rates to fluctuate with higher values, lower values, and all this stuff. It's a team effort. And honestly, this has been the lowest call volume since I've been in office in sixteen. That's the truth. Most of the calls have been, oh, I saw my car, how can I turn in high mileage? Four people have come in, they can do appeals on their, on their vehicles if they like. Mr. Spinner came in, he did his research, he went to five Ford dealers, four Ford dealerships, a CarMax, brought those into me, we pulled up the NADA value, they were within range, and he got a couple thousand dollars off. There's an appeals process if people want to do this. I cannot and will not change the values because I literally can't for anything that's twenty years old. And then things below twenty years old don't even fall into NADA, and we have our regular depreciation schedule, which most of those went down anyway.
Okay. Mr. Sealy?
Oh, oh, can I answer the question about average trade? Just generally speaking, we did run average trade the year before and different things. There's a cost associated with running a Clean Trade, average, really, five, six thousand dollars a pop to do this through N A D A. Even if we ran this book at Clean Trade, or Average Trade, we're looking at between four to nine percent difference. I mean, right now, Clean Trade on this particular one is five thousand eight twenty-five, average is five thousand one fifty. So, yes, could it have made a difference? But when you look at the definition of average trade, that definition says those vehicles need to be repaired before being put on the road. I'm not about to depreciate twenty-eight thousand vehicles in the county and say that those vehicles are not being able to be driven on the road. I don't think that's fair. That's why I use Clean Trade. Clean Trade says able to be driven on the road with minor wear and tear. That is right in the middle. And truthfully, these definitions, I use them when people do appeals, not mass assessing. We can use appeals, we can, someone could come in and say, I was reading some posts, oh, I've got trees growing through my truck. Take a picture of it and bring it in. We'll be glad to bring it down to rough trade or whatever, or brand your title. We'll be glad to take it off the tax rolls. So, and we're working on some online features for the website to get information out to the public so they can come in and do these things.
Okay, that, that, I think that would be another thing that would be very helpful as far as how people can appeal their assessment. If you could get something publicly out, I don't know, through the Carolina Alert System that I know Parks and Rec uses quite a bit and so forth, hey, if you have a question, call the Commissioner Revenue's Office. That would be very, very helpful, so we can get that out there to the citizens, too.
Mr. Black? I, I'd like to, to have Mr. Bassoon actually come back, because I think people need to understand what's happening to vehicles. Could you take a couple of vehicles, Mr. Bassoon, you know, twenty-fifteens, twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeens, various models, and show them over, up to twenty-twenty-two and what they've done N A D A wise?
Yes, sir, I, I have ten of them right here.
I mean, I'd just like to graph those and be able to put them up on the, on the overhead to show people visually what, because I have talked to a number of people. I talked to a guy who bought a twenty, a two thousand and six Chevy twenty-five hundred diesel. It, it was nice, almost two hundred thousand miles on it, the guy wanted twenty thousand for it. He, he got him down to seventeen eight and, and handed him cash. You know, I have a two thousand and three twenty-five hundred pickup diesel that I bought brand new for thirty-six thousand dollars. I, I mean, for somebody to pay that much, and I get it, but Mr. Whitman's pickup was a two-year-old county vehicle, Mr. Whitman, how many miles on that? Hundred and fifty thousand miles, was crushed by a tree, and we, the insurance company paid us. How much? Twenty-nine thousand, what we paid for the pickup? Thirty-two thousand. I mean, I'm shocked at what used cars cost. And, and I've talked to a number of people, you know, in the post office parking lot, at food line. I think once, I, I explained to them sort of where we are in this bubble. That's why I'd like to chart some of these, do them in PowerPoint, do a graph so that we could show values, what it would cost, what that vehicle, what it cost new, where it is today, and do several vehicles, you know, Ford, Chevy, Toyota, whatever, pick a wide range of vehicles and show where values have gone. Cause I, I'm shocked, too. I mean, I'm just stunned at what vehicles cost. But we did lower, I mean, I think we were, we were all told that every cent that we brought down, the personal property rate was forty-seven thousand, was in the memo back in April. I don't know that any of us knew the magnitude of that at that time, but three, can you also bring us what the region around us, what their rates are? Like Spotsylvania, Hanover, go to King and Queen, Essex, King George?
I was gonna say, we, we'll be happy to put together the graph. We'll do some research on surrounding counties, on how they assess their methodologies. And, um, you know, we, we'll be happy to come back with some information.
We can't do anything immediately, but let's do some research for ourselves, because this isn't going away.
Well, we can do some things immediately. Mr. Mr. Cully's given us a memo, I know, and Reiko's done some things immediately.
Mr., yeah.
But I did ask our attorney what, if there was a definition of surplus and.
Before we, yeah.
E N R, well.
Before we get going, Mr. Forehand hasn't had a chance. Mr. Forehand, do you have any questions?
I never put the correct amount that I paid for it on the, on what I give D M V, so the number's low.
Well, that, that's.
Well, that's being recorded.
The equalized. Sorry, that's on video, too, so.
You should say, just kidding now.
That's in jest, so. Equalized rate would be three oh five?
Yeah, but you gotta add in what we did on the thirty-dollar V L. So we're above three oh five. That would be if you didn't do anything to V L.
Okay.
So I, we've already went thirty cent down plus twenty-three.
Okay.
So you gotta add twenty-three back to that three oh five to really be an equalized rate.
All right. And we, and we have had volume growth in the last year.
Oh, we always, you know, normally always have buying, people trade into newer cars, it'll, you know, older ones fall off the rack.
Population increase and.
Okay, and we have, we have one business in particular, registered a whole bunch of them?
Few years ago.
Yeah, a couple of years ago, okay. So I guess my, my points, and pointing that out, is we, we have growth in numbers, not just growth in the value of existing, the same number we had last year. We have, we have a bigger number, and they've all increased as well, so.
Right, personal property has historically grown. This is the first time that the rates changed at all, I'm pretty sure, since I've been here.
It's the first one since I've been here. But, you know, you've been here a lot longer.
When I first got here, they were doing, they had gone from fifty percent to a hundred percent assessment on a hundred percent retail, which, that was when we got a lot of people saying you couldn't sell the car with a hundred percent retail value. And so it was lowered to that Clean Trade at a hundred percent assessed value in my first year, so that.
Add me to the list of people that hate the personal property tax.
It's the only one, the only one a lot of people pay directly, mortgages paid, you know.
And that was the big point. That was the big point, because not everybody pays a real estate tax. But probably in Caroline, everybody has a car access to it. So that was the tax that everybody had to pay.
And if you're from most points north, where they have super high real estate prices and, and super low or non-existent personal property taxes, and your paradigm, I mean, my neighborhood is rural people that are above Pennsylvania. So they're shocked. They're pleasantly surprised at the real estate bill, and they're, they're appalled at their personal property bill.
Car, car registration in New York State is about fifty dollars, and your real estate rate is through the roof.
Yeah, you pay four or five times what you're.
Exactly.
What it is, so. I, I get it, I just, like I said, I, I've, I've received a, a couple of calls and, and emails on this, but.
If we're gonna change it, we need to do that ordinance.
Yeah, that's, thank you, that's all I got.
So, Mr. Cully?
I would go with what Henrico was, said they're gonna do. One is an emergency ordinance to extend the, the due date into August sixth, fifth, fifth. And they're talking about doing a, a relief, but they can't do that until July one, because that, that law doesn't even take effect yet. So there's nothing you can do on that tonight. But that, that's what they're talking about. But combined, what they're giving back is fifty-two cent. What I would like to point out is we've already pushed down thirty cents off the rate, plus did away with our V L fee. They didn't do away with their V L fee, I don't think, or change it at all. I know Chesterfield lowered theirs fifty percent, their V L fee, but they still have it. We eliminated it. And that was one of the ones, Mr. Black, as you remember, that people complained about to you on a regular basis, was the V L fee. That's why we recommended eliminating it, eliminate that complaint of what do I get for that thirty bucks?
Just, just so people know, you keep saying V L fee, and that's really the sticker, the county sticker fee.
Sticker, equalized, which is the sticker.
But we kept the fee even when we.
Kept the fee even when we, the sticker, right.
Right, when the state police made us move the stickers to the side, when, it was a technology in the middle of the windshields on new cars, that's when we did away with actually having to obtain a sticker, but we kept the fee, because there, again, it was one point one million dollars. And so that's why we figured it was a good time to solve that problem this year with the increase in value that we would, would see if we, we eliminated that one point one million, that would be a, a, a help. And then the thirty cents that we then reduced on the rate down to three fifty. I'm not saying, you know, that you shouldn't go lower if cars continue to go up with. All I'm saying is the rest of that money is built into the budget as revenue. So anything you give back will then just be more money out of the general fund, fund balance, which I think we're at one point one now.
And here's, here's my personal feeling on this, and, and you can argue all day long that, you know, some people don't pay, some people don't pay real estate. If you're renting somewhere, you're paying real estate. I mean.
It's in the rent.
Yeah, it's in the rent.
Theoretically.
Yes, theoretically. And to me, when you pay for your real estate, it's in escrow. And I would much rather see, to be honest, on a budget, I would much rather see a budget built on a tax increase that we have to do based on real estate rather than personal property. That's just my opinion. But, I mean, as, as we move forward, I, I just, it, it's just a fee that people, if, people just do not like paying. It is, it is definitely something that, that people are, and with, if, since most people have an, they're, you know, real estate in escrow, they can split it up, they don't have to pay it all at once. So, I mean.
I understand, but you gotta think about the business aspect of a lot of personal property is, is, you know, there's other, you know, trucks and other things that we collect off, but it's not just your average homeowner taxpayer either. But anyway, it's a complicated, it's a complicated subject, but the budget in general, the money we have in revenue, the two largest things we have are real estate first and personal property second.
Sure, yeah, but it's like twenty percent, right? Isn't real, isn't that about personal property about twenty percent of our budget?
I don't wanna quote percentage, I don't have to look that up.
Yeah, that, well, it doesn't matter, yeah, it doesn't matter. Okay, do we wanna?
Can I, can I ask one question about the emergency ordinance, unless you wanna go ahead?
No, I was just gonna say, just remember, we've all said we're in a bubble, bubbles burst. So let's play this out and see what happens, cause we can't.
Yeah, but a couple of them said it wasn't gonna burst anytime soon.
Something we can do in the future.
Okay.
Um, can I ask a question about the emergency ordinance? Uh, Mr. Cully, you're saying that, that we do it until July, I mean, August?
It gives two extra months.
The impact of that two months of personal property tax is not gonna be significant to the county?
People, um, the treasurer, people have been, they've been paying at a normal rate, as best I can tell, unless the treasurer has something to tell me different. You gotta come, come down to the mic.
Cause I mean, while, while she comes down.
And it still would reflect in the budget where it's supposed to, because.
Can we do no, you know, no penalty if you pay something by June fifth? Is that too much accounting for you?
Yeah, I mean, we can't really set a different penalty, you know, like, they can pay something. But I mean, I think if we extend it till August fifth, then it's still in the, for the audit, cause we do the accrual basis. So I mean, it's still gonna be reflected in the financial statements. And I, and we haven't seen any downturn in the amount of payments we've been getting. We've been getting trays of mail every single day. So I mean, people are, are paying.
And, and, and I'm sure that's true, but, but I've, I've had a few people who never called about this before, call, and I, I had, you know, one lady call, and I talked to her about, you know, this, and then she literally broke down about the price of gas and her insurance going up and all those other things. And it's like, we, I mean, there, there are some things we can do to lighten the, the impact on our residents, and I'd like to try to do whatever we can. And it may mean the county on some other notes, you know, tightens its belt a little more, but we've got really good things coming down the road. We can hold out, I don't know if all of our residents can hold out.
Well, and I mean, and that's why, when we were talking in the, in the committee, that, you know, I thought that the extending the due date would be a way that they have two more months to pay what they could. I mean, they can make payments, and we take monthly payments, but after August fifth, we would then add the penalty, and they could still make payments. We wouldn't take collection action at, you know, one of them, but.
But we could do another emergency ordinance after we studied some more, after August fifth, right? Right, Chris?
We could.
Now's your chance to say yes or no.
You gotta come back in June and do it.
Yeah.
It might not, it might not be an emergency ordinance at that point. We could, we could address it like a regular ordinance. Uh, in fact, even this, the emergency ordinance would be good tonight and for sixty days, but that's as long as an emergency, so we would actually need to come back with the same ordinance essentially at, at a follow-up meeting to get it all the way to August. So if at that point, it's looking like you're gonna need more, you could do another ordinance. It, we might not, just not necessarily be an emergency.
Right, cause we have to do this again either in June or July to get it to August.
Yes, sir, yeah.
Cause that's, okay.
So June, because you know a July meeting.
Does the, how does the board, does the board wish to proceed with the emergency ordinance?
I'm gonna move that we proceed with the emergency ordinance.
And I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second for the emergency ordinance.
Just a little, can we still have Mr. Bassoon come back with some of that research then?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, moving on in the agenda, sorry, we are moving on to, we've done number seven, number eight, and proposed movements to the basketball, baseball and softball fields at the county park. I guess this would be, is this Mr. Sheebel, Mr. Whitman?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good evening.
Tonight, we're gonna talk about improvements at the county's baseball and softball fields. The current baseball and softball fields were developed over thirty years ago. The fields receive regular play from the public, Caroline Middle School teams, and the adult recreational leagues. Over the last couple of decades, safety standards and preferences have changed drastically. Today, the ballpark is designed with a much greater safety concerns for both spectators and players. Over the last couple of years, staff has redone the infield's for both the softball and the baseball fields. The outfield's have been improved and are well-maintained, and in fact, I would suggest that they're one of the best in the district. However, there are safety concerns that should be addressed. Neither field has dugouts. Dugouts protect the players from foul balls and errant throws. Additionally, today's standards for backstop protection is thirty-foot high fencing and/or netting. The current backstops are in decay and stand approximately eighteen feet. During the month of March and April, the Caroline Middle School softball, baseball teams practice and play on these fields. Typically, both teams will host games at the same night. Staff has witnessed both facility parking lots with as many as a hundred and fifty to two hundred players and spectators during the games. With the two backstops being a mere sixty feet apart, tipped and fouled balls from either game pose safety concerns to both the players and spectators between the fields. Unfortunately, a heads-up doesn't tell spectators in what direction or the field the ball is coming from. While even a thirty-foot backstop will not stop all tipped balls from leaving the field of play, it would likely stop up to ninety percent. In addition, the dugouts from both fields, staff recommends replacing the existing fence. In addition, the dugouts from both fields, staff recommends replacing the existing fence, which is only six foot high with an eight foot fence, uh including the backstop, and then top that with a twenty-two foot net. That would actually extend from the home plate, um, from the dugout or from the back diamond fifty feet down each uh, each length of the field.
So, it doesn't fence the whole field?
This does not, the netting, the netting would only go from the home plate down fifty feet each direction down the fa, the baseline.
But do we fence the whole fe, do we fence the whole outfield as well when we do this, with this?
Yes, sir.
So, both, both fields would get fenced, that's what I wasn't real clear about, did we fence? So, it's a four foot fence all the way around?
Eight foot, uh, it would, it actually drops down to six foot.
Six foot fence.
It's eight foot out to fi, the the fifty foot mark, and then it drops to six foot.
Mr. Sh, Mr. Sheeble, um, my only question is, is the, the bleachers that people are watching this, like, especially on the main softball field, where most of the Parks and Rec plays, the bleachers, some of those bleachers are more than fifty foot down the line, correct? And then you're, you're, you're elevated, um, if I, if I'm remembering correctly, especially on the first base side, um, some of those bleachers are further down than the first base, and that would be more than, more than the fifty feet, and then if you do a six foot fence, are are those people above the six feet?
They're all behind the the fence now, so there's none that are not behind the fence, um, where the.
Well, I understand they're all behind the fence now, but if you're talking about safety, I mean, you could get a line drive into that area now.
Correct.
I mean, right now, you can get a line drive at the four foot, would the six foot be enough to, would that, would that be enough for the protection?
So, they'll actually be, the, the spectators will actually be in that first fifty foot run, so it'll protect them to thirty feet high.
Okay, so all the, all the bleachers will be moved into that.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Sheeble, really have to fence the whole thing? I mean, I, I grew up across, literally across the street from the baseball field. There was no fence. No, it was a batting cage, no problem ever.
So, one of the reasons why we're doing that is we have an issue from the time that staff goes out there and dresses the field and gets ready for a team to come out and play, people come out there and mess the fields up prior to playtime. Um, so we get a lot of complaints about that. The other, other issue we have is during inclement weather, when it's muddy, we're trying to keep people off of the fields, the infield, 'cause they step on it to make big divots, then they won't dry out, and then we have play issues, and so it ends up with compaction issues and other things. So, that would give us the opportunity, if the field is dressed or it's wet, we could lock the fields, otherwise it'd be left open. So, that's what it gives us the opportunity to do.
That's, that's a, that's a great position, but for a hundred thousand dollars, I think I can hire somebody to sit out there for a couple hours for many years before I spent that hundred thousand dollars.
Maybe so.
Mr. Sheeble?
Yes, sir.
What I've seen when my son plays travel baseball is that a lot of the, a lot of the plates, and this one is one of them, again, our backstop is small, but the further the plate goes out, away from the backstop, the more balls get hit over it, and then we've also played in, in facilities that
I had no doubt.
Straight up from the plate is, there's a backstop there. So, if, if we are gonna change the backstop, we might have to change either where it's located or that it's actually over top of the plate, which is where the balls come from.
So, we are at the, the minimum distance that you're required is where the back fence is, is located currently. So, we actually pulled the measurements of where we're at, so we can't be any closer than where we are today, we are at that minimum standard currently. We could go farther back, but we can't be any closer. Um, the other issue we have is on the softball field, um, you should have a ninety degree angle for the fence line, and on a softball field, one of them is about seventy degrees, so you talk about weird, when you're running down, you're actually running towards the fence just because the fence line was installed incorrectly thirty years ago. So, we would also correct that it is, is this process.
Okay, um, Mr. Whitman, do you have anything that you would like to add to this?
Could, could I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah.
This is not his project?
This is, well, I mean.
But I think it's a good deal, they're uh, they're in poor shape, and then you owe you, Chris Brown, come up with, with that for money. And I really think it would give the football field, and the safety issue about the foul ball, that was really concerning.
Okay, sorry, Mr. Sheeble, yes.
Mr. Sheeble, someone came up and talked about baseball field lights earlier at Public Comment. For the soft, was that just for the softball field, or was that for that whole area out there?
That was actually for the high school.
That was the high school, okay.
At the, at the, so we've gotten, in our C I P, lights for the baseball field, softball field, and the soccer field, so they've been in the C I P for a while.
But we don't have them yet.
No, we haven't.
Okay.
Mr. Sheeble, do you know how much the emergency fencing and the safety fencing would cost versus the entire field fencing?
We had not looked at that, no, sir.
All right, can you, can you get us that, 'cause at, at fifteen, I could climb over a eight foot wall.
Yeah, I mean, that fence is only gonna keep the honest person out.
Yeah, we wanted to play baseball, if I wanted to play baseball, I'd climb over that wall with eight or nine of my friends, and we'd play, so I'm not sure how, how much it's gonna prevent. That's, that's my only thing, I don't think it's gonna prevent if you really wanna play baseball.
No, but if you're just trying to keep the fields that are in, in either poor shape and lock them, or that are ready for somebody else to play on.
You sit somebody out there for a couple of hours.
That's just not realistic, though.
No, we line the fields the, the three or four hours before the game. Always, you drag the field, you line the field, three hours before the game, that's forty-five dollars an hour. I mean, uh, for a time, for somebody to sit out there. See what happens before you spend all that money.
But it's also when the, when it's, when it's soft, and it, it might look fine until you walk out there, and then you sink up three or four inches, and that, that footprint, or those ten footprints are hard to get out without, without almost telling the area.
You gotta break it out.
It becomes a maintenance issue, but.
I mean, I've heard from the grounds guys that said it would really help them to have that, I mean, I, they called me and said, hey, what did I think?
I'm, I'm saying we're, it's a good project, I'm saying we're wasting money spending a hundred thousand dollars on the fence.
Well, the hundred thousand is just for the fence, I mean, the hundred thousand is the whole project. I mean, it's not a hundred thousand dollars for just that fence, it's a hundred, the whole project, both fields.
Yeah, you're fencing the whole field, so.
But that's not, but that's not a hundred thousand dollars, that's some amount of that project. I mean, if we're gonna do it, I think.
Can we do it, well, can Mr. Sheeble come back and tell us how much the uh fencing is?
I'll just make a motion.
Safety, oh, Mr. Black wants to go ahead? That's fine, I'm gonna vote against wasting a hundred thousand dollars on the fence.
But it's not a hundred, it's the, the fencing, the whole field is in a hundred thou, the whole project, how much is the whole project, Mr. Sheeble?
It's two hundred for everything, so.
For everything?
That installs an outfield catch fence for the softball field, which currently isn't there, um, so that puts that in there, and it also replaces uh the fencing that's currently there, the dugouts that are currently there, or the, the back fence, catch fence, um, putting in dugouts, uh, which we currently don't have, and going up eighteen feet to thirty feet high.
So, Mr. Whitman, what do you think the outfield fence, thirty thousand dollars for both fields?
He's not doing, he's, he said it's not his project.
I understa, I, I, 'cause I, I think at this point, if we're gonna fence it, now is the time to do it, we're gonna do the project, and we can lock the gates, I, I, if we're gonna spend the money, and again, how much of this is coming out of the unencumbered ballot?
Can't, can't you wait until somebody walks across the field and say, see Floyd, I told you, now we need to spend that money? Why, why spend that money now, we're telling everybody else to be frugal, we need to be frugal too. We're giving that back. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna make a motion that, that we go ahead and uh approve this and have Mr. Sheeble delay the, the final outside fencing.
So, when we say, can we just say from the end of the fifty foot, the, the connector piece, so we'd still put the outfield fence in that stops the ball from traveling?
You get a homerun.
Right, so we got that, so we'll do that in the softball field, but it'll just be the, the, the four pieces on each field that connect the, um.
You don't have to worry about that, that, they're not gonna second the motion. Mr. Underwood, will you second the motion?
I'll second it.
Oh, okay, Mr. Underwood's seconding it.
So, we have a motion and a second to include most of the project except the outfield fencing, correct?
No, including the outfield fencing.
Excluding.
Just including, just so you can see where the homerun is, we're not doing all the fencing.
All the side, up the sides, excluding the, up the sides. So, we have a motion and a second to exclude. Can we, can we, we have a motion and a second on the floor?
I'll second. Discussion.
He's already seconding it, we've already have, so we're not on for discussion.
You know, just talking to Celia, uh, I, I'm not a fan of the, the fencing, the whole thing, to fence them off, because if you fence them off, you're gonna have to have gates, and you're gonna have to have locks, and then there'll be times when it's, the field is completely playable and the gates are all locked, and then it'll it, it's just not an environment for, for locking it down, uh, uh, and I, I get what maybe we just have a sign more readily, we put it in the middle of the field, say, stay off the damn field, 'cause we don't have one of those, and we have, I don't know if we've, I've never seen one.
Using, using just those words.
Yeah, maybe so, whatever's necessary, but um, anyway, but uh but I think if we just exclude the what's necessary for not, for non-safety reasons, and honestly, I'm not a, the, the netting's only gonna last about three years, so.
So, we're told they'll last ten years.
Ten years, okay.
And they're very economical to replace, actually, so.
Okay, well, that's, so I guess once the infrastructure, the cables and all that, and then you just have to go hang them?
Crank, yep, and it just lets them down, so we'll take them down during the winter for ice and stuff like that, and then we'll put them back up.
Awesome, all right, well, that's, that's positive, all right, thank you.
Mr. Forehand, I will say that I asked Mr. Sheeble the same thing about fencing in the whole field, 'cause I was concerned about when it wasn't being used, people being able to walk around, and I was told that the gates would only be closed after they had prepped a field or they wanted to keep people off the field, other than that, the gates would be open for people to go back and forth. But I am not a baseball player, so you all can talk about this fence and that fence, and I know, I do know where home plate is. And I know if it goes over that fence, it's a homerun, but that's about it for me, so.
I've only hit one over the foul fence.
Is this a clay infield?
Yes, sir. Best it's looked in thirty years.
Grass, no grass on the infield, 'cause it's softball.
That's one softball, one's baseball.
And that has grass on infield?
Mm-mm, they're all, it's all dirt.
I hated those. Okay, I, the, the motion was to, to go ahead except for the enclosure fencing. And we got Mr. Underwood seconded, Mr. Forehand seconded too, call the question, Mr. Chairman.
All right, all those in favor of this motion say aye.
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 Any opposed?
And I'll, I'll vote aye too, but I, yeah, okay, that's fine. So, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right.
I'm back and tell us what the cost is for the fencing.
Next up on the agenda is the, um, we have informational items.
Mr. Chairman, while we're talking about softball, do we wanna look at using, applying the, the money to, to look at the cost for putting lights on the s, the high school softball field?
In the C I P.
Yeah, but I mean, it's. For this year, next year?
I don't remember, but it's in there.
As far as the cost is concerned, I mean, I think that's something, I, yeah, I'm, I'm okay for moving, to me, I think that is a I think you have a Title IX issue there, to be honest with you, I, 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 I think that's a, and I don't know that why the schools haven't brought that up, I really think you have a Title IX issue there with how is that equality when the, the male, the men can play into the night and the women can't? So, uh.
I think that's why I said fix that field in the original.
Well, the, the field, yeah, but that wasn't, they both had the fields, and the fields definitely needed to be fixed, but you still have the issue of um, even with the softball field, it's beautiful now, but you still have the issue where there's no lighting at it. Uh, and so, uh, I, I definitely would like to uh go forward, at least, uh, Mr., maybe Mr. Sheeble can start looking at, work with the schools, um, and even bring in uh Mr. Moore as well, he said he could probably maybe possibly get Dominion or some of the, some, some, eh, eh, yeah, R E C, someone to, to maybe help out, um, 'cause it's to the, any, anyone that we can help on the project, I think that would be huge.
We're willing to give them advertising rights for any donations they make.
Well, just not to, not to poo-poo anything, but just so we're aware, a, a rain delay for the tennis, they're in exactly the same situation. Well, uh, yeah. 'Cause we have four courts, and they have played nine matches, which means there has to be three matches on one match, on one court, at least one court during a match, so.
And, and I guess my concern is this, and uh, hopefully, Mr. Celia doesn't go through the roof here, but is, one of the things that we have to do at some point is the the face of this county is you have your schools, which most people interact with schools, and you have our Parks and Rec Department. And I appreciate what Mr. Sheeble has done with the baseball and softball field, but there's a lot of new people moving into the area, um, especially into the western side of the county, even in the eastern side of the county now with some of your subdivisions going up, and they are used to having Parks and Rec activities, they're used to having things, they're used to having trails, and I think we have a, a bigger a bigger issue we have to address with some of that stuff. I mean, eh, you know, we can put lights on the softball field, and, and I'm in agreement with that, and we can put lights on the tennis court, and I'm in agreement with that, but then you, you know, we put trails in before, but there's still other activities and um parks that people are really, you know, desiring, and I think that's a, a bigger project that we need to kind of focus on, what exactly we want. So, and you're part of, you're the member.
I don't know why you're saying it's on, based on me, I mean.
No, no, I'm just saying, like, I'm just saying, 'cause it's gonna cost money, I mean, we're gonna.
I mean, we're, we're looking at two fire stations, we're looking at nineteen new firefighters in this budget, and all of that comes at a cost.
Sure.
We, we made some strategic decisions about building, uh, building the new fire station and adding nineteen firefighters, and I don't disagree with that, I'm just saying that that all comes with a price tag that, that we've looked at, and we don't get the full force of that until next year.
True.
So, I mean, that's gonna be
Right.
Well over a million additional dollars when we move into that, I'm just saying, be mindful of that as we move forward, because as we all know, salaries are going up. Everybody, everybody that, that's been here tonight has talked about how expensive everything is, and that's gonna affect us as well, and I'm just trying to be mindful of where we are. It's not that I'm opposed, but we've gotta be able to pay for it, and that's the other side of the equation for us.
And maybe, uh, I don't know, maybe we, we look at one of the things, and, and I agree with you on that, that we do have to be mindful of the cost, but uh you know, I, I do think the kids in Caroline and the people of Caroline, whether it be Parks and Rec or the school system, I do think that they deserve um, we may have disagreements with all the schools, I mean, I'm, I'm personally not a big fan of turf fields, and matter of fact, I talk to my players, and a lot of the players don't really like the turf fields that everyone's getting, you know, getting tackled on turf field, they don't think it's exactly fun, I think a nice, beautiful grass field. So, we have disagreements on some of the stuff, but I do think as a whole, that students that are going to our school system and the residents of the county who want to use facilities, they do have a right to um, facilities that are com, you know, comparable to your King George, or, you know, some of the other facilities that they have in other counties, so I think that's something that we need to look at as, as a whole and, and support that. So, with that said, um, what do we wanna do as far as, can we bring, can we bring that back, the uh can we bring back the, the softball lights at the next meeting?
Can, can we do it at the June meeting?
Yes, absolutely.
'Cause I'd like to meet with the company that put in the lights at the high school and to get an estimate from them, 'cause they did that on the contract, and I think that was very economical, um, and they did a great job, so.
And it, and as Mr. Forehand's.
And the tennis courts while you're getting an estimate.
Yes, get an estimate, 'cause it, maybe if you're doing both of them at the same time, it would be, there would be a cost savings there to, to install both at the same time.
Okay.
And don't forget to mention the advertising rights for donation.
Yeah. Oh, well, what if it's, what if it's Marlboro?
Little League got one of their fields lit up for about.
So, you're gonna advertise Marlboro at the high school tennis court? Yeah, I don't think that's gonna work. Oh, okay, all right. Okay, so, uh, we are through with that, now moving on to um, I guess now we can go to uh international, uh, in, in international, informational, I'm tired, informational and calendar updates.
To go back and close session?
Yeah.
We are, yeah.
I don't know why we couldn't have done that while we were.
Dark down here. We included, uh, members aboard, uh, the status of capital project update, and we have added a a column that does say whether it's complete or not, so you can tell those projects that whether the money's spent or not, uh, they are complete. All right, thank you. Of course, we have a meeting on uh the twenty-fourth, Tuesday, the twenty-fourth of May, and then Monday, right after that is Memorial Day, which was mentioned, there's a program uh, uh, Memorial Day program on the lawn, uh courthouse lawn at eleven, and that is also obviously a holiday, and then our June meeting is the fourteenth. Um, and then, uh, Juneteenth is also a state holiday on the twentieth, and then the County Agricultural Fair is the twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth of June, those are the things that we have on the calendar.
And then the County Agricultural Fair is the 22nd, 23rd, 24th and 25th of June. Those are the things we have on the calendar. Still sort of not what it used to be prior to the pandemic, but a few things still there.
Thank you. All right, I will take a motion. Do you have that second motion?
Um.
Do we have this?
I do.
Yeah. Take a motion. Oh, first of all, before we do that, can we get closing board comments?
Want me to start?
Yeah.
Um, my only comment was regarding, uh, the gentleman that came in, the Board of Equalization, and I'm gonna follow up with him, only because I've, I've spoken with him before and Nancy's ear, he's one of your constituents, but, he was told something that was not the case. And after speaking with staff, the, it, it appears, I mean, once that board is established, they're basically a standalone entity, as I understand it. And we don't have any oversight, county administration doesn't have any oversight, the clerk doesn't have any oversight. The, the only oversight for that board is the actual circuit court judge. And I will encourage him, um, to, to pay the fee that it requires to have that submitted to the judge for his consideration and provide the information to the judge so that, um, whatever, uh, process improvements that we need to make that we actually get, get made for everyone in the county, for however long we, we're, the Board of Equalization exists, which would be, you know, forever, uh, technically, so, um, again, I've spoken with him and, uh, I can empathize with his frustration because he was put into a and, and to a, to a circle that, uh, has no end, so, anyway, thank you.
All right, Mr. Sealy?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
I have none. Mrs. Law?
No, I have none. It's getting late and we still have a closed call.
I'm just glad we took a chance to, or we had a chance to look at the personal property tax and hope we can come up with a good solution for everybody. Thank you.
Okay. All right, um, so we, I need that motion. Oh, Mr. Underwood, I'm sorry.
And then, Mr. Thomas?
Thank you. I need a motion.
Uh, make them. I move that this board convening closed meeting pursuant to the real estate consultation with legal counsel in contract, in contract exemption of section 2.23711A 388 and 829 of the Code of Virginia for consultation with county attorney and discussion with staff regarding potential acquisitions of real estate by the county for the use of a new fire station in the Sparta area and for the county's use of an adjacent county administrative office in Bowling Green, where discussion open meeting would adversely affect the county's bargaining position and negotiating strategy. Do we need the personnel exemption?
Yes.
And the personnel exemption of 2.23711A 1 of the Code of Virginia to discuss personal matters relating to duty and performance and views of the county attorney.
Motion, do we have, uh, need a second? I have a motion, do I need a second?
Second.
Motion and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, motion carry. We need a motion to come on a closed session.
So moved.
Second.
Don't you have to read that?
I'm gonna read, yeah. Um, I move that the Caroline County Board of Supervised Certified Certified at the best that each board member is knowledgeable that only public business matters lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements by the Virginia law were discussed in closed meeting with which this certification applies. Only such business matters were identified in the motion convening closed meeting were heard, discussed or considered by the board.
I have a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Was that aye?
Was.
There was an aye from Mr. Underwood.
Mr. Underwood, was that an aye or nay?
Aye.
Okay, sorry. Um, I just need a certification that only the matters that were discussed on the agenda are the ones that we discussed in closed meeting. Mr. Uh, Forehand, do you so certify?
I so certify.
Mr. Sealy?
I so certify.
I so certify.
I so certify?
I so certify.
Mr. Underwood?
I so certify.
Uh, can I get a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Adjourn, yes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.
Thank you.